We'll follow book session to order six forty-four, February eleventh, twenty twenty. Thank you all for joining us tonight. We've got a great day this evening. Our first topic is to discuss our crisis response team. We've got, first up, a review of the job description for a crisis response coordinator, and then we'll have some updates over securely in Yaggle that helps us get some information on what those tools could bring to our district. So, thanks for all being here. But first up, I would like to quickly look at the job spec for the crisis response coordinator. Care assessment. Thank you. Care assessment team.
Yeah, so, we have a new name again. So, that's just, I think, for a proposal, for us to consider it. We don't have to get caught in the weeds on that tonight if we don't want to, but I think one thing that was learned from the folks that went to the conference was about the care involved in this, and that's something we've consistently talked about as part of this process, about the coordination of care that we'd like this person to really try to focus on and do. And so, we went from threat assessment, referring to that, to crisis response, and then, most recently here, we put the care assessment on there. So, that was probably just a marker for us tonight to have you entertain some thinking around that, how we'd like to refer to it consistently as we go out. But I think the care assessment piece does really capture the essence of what we're trying to do and the spirit of what that role would be. And I think the words threat, crisis, again focuses on, focus heavily on the public safety side, and while we don't want to ignore that side, know that's a piece of it. I think the real kind of effort behind some of this stuff is how we do coordinate that care afterwards. And so, how we can evaluate those threat, threats and ensure safety, provide care for all those individuals involved is two big components of that, as we've consistently talked about it. So, other than that, you have the qualifications, the reporting structure, the job role, performance responsibilities there in front of you. Those should look pretty familiar from how we had broken out some of those duties and roles before as we presented them to you. We just put it in the format of a job description this evening, and I think we're just anxious for some direction on willingness to move forward in posting and hiring the position, and any feedback you have on the job spec.
Fairly easy question about the job description. The care assessment coordinator job role two, we need to establish a care assessment team in each secondary school at this level. It's not correct to include the care assessment team leaders in each of those buildings?
So, I think when we've discussed that before, Charlie, when you think about the team leaders, the different ones, remember that's a multi-functional team, right? And so, that's going to include administrative reps, that's going to include family student advocates, guidance counselors, it's going to be dependent on, a little bit, on our development of that structure and how that place could look a little different, junior high and high school. And I don't think we want to have all of those things predetermined. We really see part of this person's role as identifying what do those teams look like in each of the buildings. Of course, we've been talking to other districts and then attended this professional learning experience, so I think we'd have some idea of what that group would look like, but at the same time, we think that's why it's in the performance responsibility, right, is that this person will develop those teams and recommend a structure for how that would look for us.
Are we thinking that that structure is going to result in a new structure that's the same for each building?
I think it would be similar, yeah, pretty similar, yeah.
There were a couple of things in the job description that I was looking for and didn't see. And one is around the coordinator having a method of monitoring the effectiveness of the procedures and beginning into some continuous improvement, right? We're going to learn as we do this into something in there around working to get better based on wordings. And then the second thing, consideration is just something about the coordinator having the responsibility of providing a, like a hand to the program update to the general directors, just so that we see how the program is working, and again, ideas for improvement, working to make shifts, whatever.
Yep, we can go. I think that'd be an important piece, and we've talked about that before, almost from that Equity Lunch piece too, right, some of that reporting out that we want to make sure...
We want to be transparent.
I mean, there's a lot of things, I think we want to identify what you guys want to see is and what we think would be important to show you. And then, like you said, they want to be successful, right? Success of the effort. So, inside of that, just probably doing a little bit from the even the grant funding, reporting out we have to do there, so those can work together.
And Matt, as far as advertising for this position, I'm assuming it will be done on a national level?
We'll try our best, yes, yeah.
So, I mean, I know it's a set amount that we can pay this person, but some of the things we're asking for, I mean, I'm sure we probably do have somebody in the community, but I want to make sure that, you know, we try and cast a wide net to make sure we get some of the best qualified people, not only locally, but people that may be looking to make a move here to Iowa City.
Yeah, I think that's important for us to consider, is trying to reach outside of just our local area. Obviously, anytime you hire, there's advantages with somebody local, right? Understanding the system and structure, but there's also advantages of somebody from the outside coming in and giving us a new eye on it. So, we want to make that salary competitive, that it would draw somebody potentially in. So, that's not something we put on the job description, but really in that seventy-five to ninety thousand dollar range, and so, we think that could draw somebody potentially in for them.
Is that what complements what they're making in these other spaces? And what type of, and so, in the other districts, I guess, what, who are the people who are their coordinators? Like, what are their backgrounds, what type of skill do they get?
Background is something, credit for the threat assessment certified or to get the certification for that as well. And then, some background in mental health as well.
What's it take to get that threat assessment certification?
I'm not sure. But ADEP, I know provides it. I know it's a rigorous process. I can't, like...
Better than maybe like weeks, not?
Oh, okay, that's a longer process.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the option, but I think it's a lot of this, like, that you love the salary to be established, because I do believe we need to make it competitive if we want to get the best person in.
So, when are you planning to post it?
Tomorrow, if you'll let us.
Kind of an idyllic question.
Oh, I'm saying, I'm not chasing here at the table.
Yeah.
I can make a lot of promises tonight, he's home with the baby, so, yeah, do whatever we want, I guess.
The disposition reports, in this scheme, reports and directors, student services, is that where we're going to?
Well, I, yes, I think it's the easy answer to that, Charlie. Kate's really been the one spearheading the work around the care assessment process for us, and so, I think it would be really under her umbrella of supervision work to try to direct the work of this person and try to coordinate that work. Obviously, this person, like any of our employees, is going to have work with not only just student services, but learning supports, touching all of those really director positions, it could be a technology component. So, anytime you work on the district level with some of those things or in our buildings, you're going to have to work with multiple parts of the organization, but we really see that reporting out through Kate.
Any other questions or comments on the job description?
I thought the job description was great, as far as I'm concerned. I think we should post it and start the process. I want the other directors to know. I saw that we're funding this in part through the COPS fiscal year nineteen grant. The COPS fiscal year twenty grant just got released with the application deadline dated April eighth. I've already talked to Matt and Amy and Steve and forwarded that on. But my suggestion is that, and it's assuming that we can, which we should be able to, is to reapply for another COPS grant to fund this position with more grant money for the following year, for next year. It'll give us the money, we might as well take the resource of it. But I just wanted everybody to kind of know that that's out there. April eighth grant application deadline?
Yeah, I know the closing window's in April.
Yeah.
So, recently, they would have, would do two grants for the same activity, is that right? Or is...
If they forget next, so...
And extend, basically extend me in the first year.
Right, so, a lot of the BJA grant programs are renewed for following years. So, this, the COPS grant for fiscal year twenty, they're going to push out fifty million dollars nationwide, and you get up to half a million dollars for applicants. So, there's a significant pool of money, and it's for programs like this, care assessment team coordinator, or I think COPS call for crisis assessment coordinator, but things like this. And so, it's just another funding source so that we don't have to use our general dollars for another year.
But we're not adding to the amount of money we're putting into care assessment?
Correct. My understanding is the grant right now funds the first year salary, or maybe seventy-five for two years.
It says two years, I think.
So, then we could, we could ask for another year or two years of funding with this new coordinator.
Yeah, I totally see. I think we had just a real brief touch base before the meeting, that it was one year, it's actually two years of the position, but I think like she's saying, we could extend that through years, three through five, right? And so, we could do something like that, or apply for a couple more years if we wanted to see additional funds for it. I think what we also learned through this grant process, there's a lot of community conversation around that, that if we want to submit another application for that, we'll make sure you're well updated and you know the components of that ahead of time, especially kind of just the sensitivity around this topic. So, we bring that forward, we'll be sure to ask for an agenda space on that.
I have one quick question, and maybe it's just the way my head connects things. So, they're back-to-back on there, as Provide PD and Participate in PD, and to me, that reads as like a train-the-trainer kind of thing, like they're getting PD and then they're addition, is that kind of the model, or?
Yeah, so, we would send them to some extensive training around it, or, you know, as part of just the support for their position, but that would be the idea of establishing those building teams, right, is that they'd be able to share some of that knowledge with the building-based teams, and, like you said, train the trainers, perfect way to think about it.
Anything else? I think you're good to go. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we've got our friends from Securly to talk about your office. Matt, can you talk a little bit about Securly?
Yeah, so, I think their presentation's loaded, so we really have two different groups here to talk to you tonight about one part of this grant process too, and that was kind of the social media monitoring part, and we know that there's, again, some high sensitivity around that, our different stakeholder groups in the community, what that means. So, we wanted you well informed on what exactly that meant, that we would be anticipating in if we were to choose one of the providers and go ahead with that. And we talked through it kind of loosely, but we thought this would give some good specifics with what exactly those tools could or would be able to do. So, I'll turn it over securely and let them have the floor, and then we'll transition to Yaggle when they've had their chance to present and ask questions.
So, I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Angelica, I'm the solutions advisor for the schools in Iowa. I've been with Securly for over a year. I typically work actually with Adam in your type department, you have for over a year now. So, we were having conversations about what you guys are focused on regarding the social media monitoring and student safety, and I brought along my director, Mike Jolly. I'll let him introduce himself, but we also have a customer here for you as well.
Thanks. Like she said, my name's Mike Jolly, I'm the director, general manager and director of student safety at Securly. I'm a former principal, so I love the opportunity to speak with the school board again. I still get a little nervous, and I was in Miami a month ago speaking to five hundred principals, and I, not a problem, but I get in front of the school board again and get a little shaky. I did my administration career outside of Charlotte, North Carolina, in a pretty large high school, and that's where my passion for student safety came from. I joined Securly not because I wanted to lead the principalship, the reason that I joined Securly is because I went through some things as a principal that more and more school districts, more and more parents, more and more schools are facing when it comes to that. So, if you look at these, you know, you see on the right, as you talk with what students were doing with the technology, and I've worked with your district as well the past couple of years, we rolled out our Securly Home feature, the parent app that they have access to, which is a tremendous tool to get parent engagement, to get community engagement, you know, get them involved with what they're doing online and help them actually parent, you know, build that support with the school system. And so, as we continue to do things, we know that students and schools and parents struggle with digital citizenship, they struggle with cyberbullying, they struggle with suicide, self-harm, violence, all those things. And, you know, this, just some national headlines on the right, you see Harvard a couple of years ago, you know, this is real. Students posted some things on social media that you're talking about. These are students who were accepted into Harvard. Harvard is the most exclusive university in the United States based on acceptance rate. I think it's around four percent. And these students have worked hard enough and were accepted, and they had that taken away in an instant over racist things they were doing on Facebook. So, again, it's important to teach our students, obviously, common sense, don't be racist, but also, what you put online matters, right? Your digital footprint becomes your resume, and that is a powerful lesson that's important that I think schools and parents both need to work together to teach students so they're not in this boat. Also, as we move to the left, this was my former district where it says, you see the young man, I know the picture's kind of small, but he's got a mask, he's got what looks like a real gun and a phone taking the picture. He actually added the high school in this tweet about what he was going to do at the pep rally, seven sixty-fives going through heads, lots of profanity. He thought it was hilarious. Well, seven hundred some kids were absent the next day from that high school and over four hundred in the next. If you're a parent and you see this, you may think, well, this may be a joke, but in today's age, you can't, you can't chance that, you don't want to chance that. And not just students being absent, staff were absent at a high level. You talk about the power of hundreds and hundreds of kids absent, the lost learning that went on, how much time teachers and parents had to put into making up that activity. So, that's why it's securely going to give schools the tools to be proactive, to help students understand better what they do on social media, how it matters, and, you know, we'll say, well, you know, students don't use Facebook as much, they don't use Twitter as much. Here's a great example, very recently, of a kid who did use Twitter and did have a tremendous impact on the school. And the last piece, this was, when we talk about what we do at Securly, this was one of my students, this was my high school, this was one of the times we made national news. It was not for a good reason. This young man, Paul, Paul was a, Paul had great grades, Paul had great attendance, Paul had no discipline issues his entire career. But Paul stood up in a class and said, "I've got a bomb and I'm trying to join ISIS and I'm going to kill all of you." And that was a pretty dramatic moment in a high school, very large high school, close to two thousand kids. We also had an elementary and a middle school on our campus. So, we were talking thousands of kids, thousands of parents, everybody's got a device, we had a Chromebook in the hands of every kid in our district. If you could imagine, it's the worst-case scenario for what's going on. Luckily, thankfully, our amazing police department, we had other law enforcements from other municipalities come in, and all the kids were evacuated, everything was safe, school was there, everybody's out. He did have weapons, he didn't have a bomb, but he did have weapons on his person on campus that day, and he was involved with searches for terrorist organizations, including ISIS. He was involved in child pornography, lots of things involving technology. And the reason I talk about this now, we, Securly, there was social media activity, internet activity, and all these things could have given me a chance. Not saying it would have a hundred percent, but had something like Securly been in place as a filter and monitoring the school devices, monitoring social media, giving the parents the ability to look and see what their kids are doing as well, enough things would have bubbled up and been flagged, so I would have had a fighting chance to use my resources. We have mental health workers in our school system, we have counselors, we have crisis teams, we have lots of resources to put to kids, but if we can't identify them, you can't use those resources. And there are plenty of kids like Paul walking around every school and every district in this country who need help, and it's really tough for the schools to identify, and they may not ask. And that's one of the things about our filter. The filter doesn't discriminate. The AI, the sentiment analysis that we use, doesn't discriminate, it looks at everything, and it bubbles that up and it gives administrators, it gives counselors, it gives parents, even law enforcement occasionally, the ability to then come in and act. So, I'll talk briefly about how, you know, that actually works and what that does. Obviously, we know cyberbullying is a major issue, we know it's on the rise, we know young girls, I'm a proud father of two daughters, and it's one of the things that terrifies me as my oldest is getting in the age of using social media and having devices, is that girls are twice as likely not only to be the victim, but also the perpetrator when it comes to that. But, you know, the keyboard courage, sitting behind a phone, sitting behind a device, makes it extremely easier. When I was in school in the eighties, at least somebody had to bully me to my face, right? It took a little more than it does to just sit at your, somewhere in a room, in a car, wherever, and just bombard constantly kids over and over and over. And so, there's lots of negative effects to that, as you see there, the engaging self-harm, there's suicide. According to the CDC, suicide is the second-leading cause of death now for middle and high school-aged kids in our country. You'll see data over and over and over that supports that. So, that's why it's so important for us to monitor what kids are doing in Google Docs, what kids are emailing back and forth on their school account, what they're searching for online, the sites they're visiting, because it allows you to intervene. And again, you look more powerful at the two thousand seventeen National Youth Risk Behavior Survey, and you'll see, and again, I know that's really small, so, when they surveyed, a pretty big survey, I'm sure many of you are familiar with, when they surveyed high school students over the last year for the seventeen survey, so seriously considered attempting suicide, seventeen percent, actually made a plan, thirteen percent, made an attempt, seven percent, and had an attempt that actually needed medical attention was two point four percent. So, again, we know across the country, it's a major issue, and so, what we do is we offer a couple of things. The first is Auditor, and again, you guys are using our web filter, which is looking at, you know, what the kids are searching, what they're doing, sites they're visiting, but we also, in addition, can look at what they're sending back and forth via email. And with the Auditor, it uses AI, so there's sentiment analysis, and the sentiment analysis is over seventy percent accurate, and pulling out items that would not normally be pulled out when you're just looking for keywords. For example, if I'm a student and I bomb a test or things are going really bad and I want to express myself via, you know, an email or even social media, and I say, you know, "I can't take this anymore, I'm going to end it all," that's a pretty powerful message. But in that message, there are no keywords, that is what typically have been looked for in our industry for years. So, there's no suicide, there's no kill myself, anything like that, but our engine that looks for the sentiment and triggers in those combinations of wordings will flesh that out and send that alert. And one of the things that I love about our system is that those alerts can be sent to the school level, to anyone that the school district dean should get those alerts. In other words, they can go right to the principal, right to the dean, right to a social worker, right to a counselor. These alerts get immediately in the hands of the people that need them, the people that know the kids, that work with the kids and can get them to help. So, again, that's Auditor. Auditor looks at the Gmail, it'll also look at what they're doing in Google Docs, and it also scans for pornography images in email and that are loaded in Google Drive as well.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Have you increased the knowledge of your AI and through the sentiments? Do you track, like, plus positives, how to go back and continue to, continue to improve the capability?
Absolutely. So, we essentially, every single day, so, one, we crowdsource. So, we serve ten million, we cover ten million students in the U.S. alone, work with ten thousand schools and districts, and every single one of those alerts that comes out has a poll at the bottom, is this accurate, yes or no? So, the principal, whoever gets that hits that, and that automatically, so there's crowdsourcing there that will feed those, and then on top of it, we use industry knowledge, sites that pop up, other things that come to our research and development team and feed that on a weekly basis, actually. But the biggest source of our accuracy in that testing comes from what administrators and what counselors are giving us. And anybody that, please stop for questions at any time. And so, twenty-four, so, when I go back to Auditor, one of the biggest pieces of concern that gets raised by schools are, well, now, now we're getting alerts, and kids don't stop using this technology or doing things when they leave school, right? So, what if we get an alert at two in the morning? You know, what if we get an alert at midnight? What if we get an alert on Sunday? And then, there becomes the fear, which I understand as a principal, of now I've got to be a twenty-four-hour employee. And I cared about kids twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, there was no turning off that. But I also want to be able to enjoy my daughter's soccer game on a Saturday without feeling if I miss an email that a kid might hurt themselves, and I could have had that information there. So, because of that, you know, concern, one of the things that Securly added over two years ago is a team of student safety analysts that are there to be a second set of eyes for the school during the school day, obviously, because there, we know, the email may go to a counselor, a principal, a dean, and a resource officer, but all those people may be tied up with something. All those people might not immediately be able to get to their email. So, we have that team of student safety analysts, and I want to talk about those analysts. These are people that are former school psychologists, they have degrees in criminology, they've worked in law enforcement, these are people that are highly trained and three times, and they're stationed in three time zones in the U.S. and globally, but the idea that we look for are people that know when kids are crying out for help. We want people who can really look at the picture that we put to them by looking at filter data, by looking at social media, everything that they have, and determine, are these two kids that are emailing back and forth about a video game they're playing saying, "I'm going to kill you," or is this a kid who's literally saying to somebody, "I'm going to kill you?" And that's a tough thing, and so, that's why we go after people specifically with those backgrounds and train them to look at this information. But that is our twenty-four-hour team, so, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, they get the alerts, and the way that works is if it is extreme risk, in other words, if we think that based on what the alert, as well as the additional information, means that that kid is going to harm themselves or others in the next twenty-four hours, then we're going to call the district designee. And people ask, well, who is that? That's for you to determine. A lot of districts we work with will have district designees at each school and a backup at the central office during the school hours, and then they'll defer to local law enforcement after hours, on weekends, on holidays, and because, you know, districts do have those great relationships, and it's much easier on a holiday or Saturday to get a hold of law enforcement than it may be to get in touch with somebody at the school in a situation that we would alert you for via phone, via text, or call. A lot of times, those are, you know, seconds matter, and we want to be able to get a hold of somebody. A great example, this past Thanksgiving holiday, on Black Friday, we had a young lady move from one state to another state, emailed her friend via school email back home, essentially saying, "I told my parents not to move me, I hate my life, I'm going to kill myself." Right? This is, again, a day when there's no school in session, the holiday, people are off, and what we're able to do with that is take that information, reach out to local law enforcement so they can go do a welfare check on that child and make sure that, you know, things are okay and their parents are aware of what's going on, and let parents be parents and seek the help they need for their kids. But that's what the twenty-four-hour monitoring does, and again, this is what we flag, we look at flag sentiments, so that's the AI sentiment analysis, and we apply that to Facebook and Twitter. So, tweets they make, posts they do on Facebook, and we look for bullying, violence, self-harm, those things we look for there. We also flag searches, and I think this is one of the most powerful things that Securly does as a web filter for your district and that our twenty-four team can combine, because a lot of times, before a kid ever sends an email, before they fire off a tweet, before they write a letter in the Google Doc that's about suicide, they search it. And we see, again, serving ten million kids, we see some disturbing searches, "How do I kill myself painlessly? How do I tie a noose? How do I overdose on Tylenol?" They want to know, kids will lie to me, my own kids have lied to me, I'm not proud of that, but kids will lie to police, kids will lie to administrators, kids will lie to about anybody. But they don't lie to Google, because if they lie to the search engine, they don't get the information that they need, and that's what we see. So, we see the flagged searches, we also flag sites, we know that there are a handful of sites that if kids visit, lostallhope.com, Church of Euthanasia, there's lots of different sites that we know if they're on, there's a good chance they're thinking about harming themselves. And so, we flag those, we get those out, we build that picture. And here's just an example of Y24, this is a kid's search and browsing history that an alert's triggered by a combination of AI and phrase matching. The analyst can see this, and this is the information that pops up that they're able to then convey to the designee at the school district that was going on. Now, the school also receives these emails in real time. The idea of having the twenty-four-hour team and having that live backup is because we know school officials even can't always answer those in real time. But pretty powerful stuff there to see the searches and the sites, you know, that kids are visiting. Here's another one, you know, a kid starts out a search for guns, and we're not going to flag just a search for gun, right, or guns. We know there's our legitimate historical reasons, there's civics classes, there's U.S. history classes, there's things that are going on, flag some of those, but then, when you get into where to buy a trench coat and then how to make a pipe bomb. So, when how to make a pipe bomb triggers that flag, the analyst has all these other things, and they're able to reach out to the school, they have that full picture. And one of the most frustrating times I ever had as a principal was having a student in my office that I firmly believed was going to hurt themselves, but they did not reach the threshold because they would not say some magic words, and I could not get the crisis team to be involved because of that. And I think what schools have given us feedback on is that this, having this amount of information, having that picture combined with social media, email, Google, web browsing, everything they're doing, really gives them the full picture to provide the best help for those students. And then, here's just another one. And again, this is what helps schools, this is what helps counselors, principals identify those kids who need help, because a lot of times, kids aren't going to say, "I need help." Paul had a lot of things going on, but didn't say a word to anybody, even his parents, who were pretty involved parents, until he stood up in class and said he wanted to kill everybody. So, this is the type of thing that we really want to try to prevent. We see the data, a lot of schools ask, you know, when do these alerts happen, and you can see that the majority of them actually do happen during school hours, but there are enough that happened, they do happen over the weekend, and a small percent do there are enough that happened, they do happen over the weekend and a small percent do happen early morning or after school. But we can provide that if principals, you know, do wanna know when are these calls gonna come in, law enforcement wanna know, we have full data. And what we've done is to when they, um, when they can expect those also as far as the size of your district and, um, how many notifications you can expect to receive and for what. And then this is essentially how it works, the student creates an email, the student does a web search, the student does a post, it gets flagged by the sentiment analysis, it gets pulled in, and then the, um, the team will look at that and determine, is this imminent? Is this an immediate threat? They'll reach out to the designee. If it's not, it goes in, you know, it's nothing, no alert sent. I think I'm right at my time, but I do wanna to, to, uh, answer any questions if anybody has any about that.
Are you only monitoring their school issued Chromebook and the activity on that?
That's correct.
So if they have a personal phone that they're using to pass, hack, or not get captured?
Correct. We have a, a separate consumer that parents can, that would do that, but, um, when they're on the school device, regardless, if they're on the school device at home or wherever they are on that, we monitor that, we don't monitor things on the cell phone.
If they're using their cellphone though for the G Suite and sending emails from their cellphone on a district email, will that still get monitored?
Correct. We, we won't see social media or search browsing history on those cell phones. And, and, and also, as we're talking about that, people get really nervous about how evasive this is, and that's why we do focus on the school devices, school loaned accounts for kids. And I, I know this sounds funny from a company who looks at everything a kid does, but we do care deeply about privacy. We're actually certified, um, by iKeepSafe, if, if anybody's familiar with those, but iKeepSafe is kinda the gold standard when looking at FERPA and other, uh, COPA and other privacy certifications. So they put us through a rigorous certification process once a year where they look at our data storage, data mapping, data deletion, everything we do, because what we have, we do understand, is as sensitive as I, as it can get when you talk about the, the browsing history of students. And so that's why we take steps to, to work with those. We also work with Future Privacy Forum, and, and we're a signatory on their pledge. And also to be a signatory on that, we have to go through several steps to make sure we're being good stewards of data and also obviously following all, all, um, laws, regulations. We also have the, um, California Student Privacy Badge, and people say, well, why do we care in, in Iowa if you have the California Student Privacy Badge? And because, um, it, it is probably about as rigorous as you can get in the country when it comes to that. So that's why we've gone through that process to do.
So I have two questions.
Yes.
So one would be volume of what you typically have seen in districts, right? I mean, you know, so how much are you seeing, you know, what's the, what's the volume of that look like? In our campuses, there are about fifteen hundred students apiece at our comprehensive campuses. And then the second one would be, how do you know, once we've picked it up, you know, is it, what's the communication between this 24 and, say, this guy gets an email on his campus and he, you know, he's on it, right? I mean, what's that look like or how do you guys know?
Sure. So when, to start with there, you can see we base this on a 30K district and I can, I can, um, you know, when you break the size of, of, of your district, I think we're filtering around 5,000 kids, uh, students right now, um, that are there, so when you, when you look at that. Um, I know we have other districts that, that are that size and they see, you know, twenty, thirty, um, roughly notifications, you know, that are coming in about that. A district your size would probably, um, when you look at the, the actual calls, not just an email notification, um, you can see on the next slide, as far as the call, twenty in a year for a 30K district average, at one a week. So you're not gonna have a massive volume in a district, you're gonna see five to ten of those. Because again, those are for the items that we believe based on that full picture that we have with the data, that there's imminent, you know, threat to them or others within the next 24 hours. And what was the second part?
Second part, how do you know, like you said, if it's been dealt with at the school level or if it's something that your high-level team you're talking about needs to do further moment?
So we do, we do a oneboarding call and you, we talk because we want the schools to be comfortable, we don't wanna give you the process. You know, we give you a template of, of, to, so you can tell us who your contacts are and things like that, and then we work out how you want to determine that within your own district, how it's handled, and then how to communicate that back to us. Typically, the way it works, somebody gets it, they respond to everybody in their group, hey, I've got this, and then we do a checkup after. Or in some districts, they'll automatically reply to the email they have for securely, let them know that it's handled. Yes, sir?
I was contacted by, by somewhere, I think, by, um, a student, with one of the student newspapers. And they were very interested in the, uh, uh, these applications, obtaining student information and selling it, or its information, if I can talk about that.
Yeah, we, as a company, we absolutely do not sell any, any data at all that, that's personalized. Don't share, don't sell it. The only thing, the only thing we share is with Amazon Web Services because we are hosted in the cloud, and so with, it is shared with Amazon so we can actually function, but that's an industry standard piece. Well, as far as any kind of sharing or selling, we absolutely do not do that.
How long are you retaining the data?
Um, until you tell us to get rid of it or until the student graduates. So we have it set every, some districts want to, some districts think there's value in going back four and five years, if there's a need for maybe a legal reason. Other districts have us deleted every six months. So it's completely up to you, but by default, if, we'll get a CSV file in your district every summer of kids who graduated and it gets deleted then.
Why only Facebook and Twitter?
Um, so we are looking at adding other things, but because of its, its words, more so than Instagram, Snapchat, things that are images, so there's some privacy things, there's legal things, there's, there's different things that keep us from looking at some of those.
So you're not using images?
We do, we look nude images, we search nude images in email and in Google Drive. So a student uploads an image to Google Drive, which we know is a common problem in schools that kids will do, where they email it. My parents checked my cellphone, but they're not gonna check my school email account, so I'm gonna email a picture here. So we do scan images for those, and those, um, you know, will come up. But as, as far as looking at Snapchat, Twitter, or excuse me, Snapchat and Instagram, that's what people ask, we don't do that, we do the, um, the language right now. And that's why Facebook and Twitter, because they are, um, they're posts. And those are also two of the most common things that schools allow. Athletic teams, schools, groups, classes, they have a class Twitter page, they have a class Facebook account, so they're more commonly used in education as well.
So can students, uh, escape this monitoring?
So can students circumvent the filter? Is that? Yes, there, there is, yes, there are students, i- it's a cat and mouse game, again, as we talk crowdsourcing. You know, we take every effort we can to make sure kids aren't getting there, but, you know, kids are very smart, kids are crafty, kids are tech savvy, so occasionally, yes, kids do find a way. The good thing, again, about serving ten million students is that gets out pretty quickly and if there is something there, we're able to close that, that loophole. But there's, there's always gonna be a way for a kid to try to find to circumvent the filter on some level. But we have, we do, we, we have, um, the response that we get in our surveys from districts is they're very happy and usually see very low amounts of issues that arise from a student finding a way around it.
On those, on those district surveys, what's one thing that districts are wanting to improve on?
The, um, one is our tip line that we offer, they want an app for that, and then they want us, the, the other thing that comes up very often?
Is there any reporting for the students that are concerned about a friend or, okay?
Correct. So part of this bundle that we have comes with a tip line, students can use a web form, they can use an email, they can text us, they can call us, but there's not an application. So the biggest ask for that, um, is an application for that. The other biggest ask, um, for customers is to block everything that is not already categorized coming in. As a company who only serves education, we only serve K-12, not interested in enterprise, anything else, we don't wanna overblock. We wanna make sure kids can get to the things they can get to, that teachers can assign the assignments they need to make and kids are able to get to those without overblocking. So again, we use sentiment analysis, that AI, to then categorize new sites that show up automatically. If we find out it is pornography or gambling, drugs, something related, then we, on the backend, we'll block it. But we don't by default block it just because we don't know what it is. And again, that's because we just, our philosophy, we don't wanna, kids need to be kids on some level when it comes to, to education and get to the educational sites, and we don't ever wanna be, we wanna block the porn and the drugs and gambling, but we don't wanna block the legitimate things that they need to get to, uh, for their academics. Thank you so much.
You know, appreciate that very much, thank you so much. So, up next?
Ta-da! All right. So this is Jerry Roberts, and he is our regional sales manager for Iowa and some surrounding states. I am Gretchen Thompson, I'm the regional, uh, vice president of Gaggle. Um, my background is in education, so I too was a language arts teacher, moved into being a principal, and then I retired in CNI from Cleveland Public, uh, and had worked in Akron City as well. So I'm here to kinda take you through this and share a lot of similarities, right? So we always support anyone that's keeping kids safe, that's for sure.
There, teach how with this journey?
Yeah. See how? I'm gonna check it out. There it is, it's up. Awesome. I was tech support in my spare time.
I love it. Come on up! I got it. Thank you, sir.
Good to go.
All right. So that's awesome. Thank you for having us, we appreciate it. Um, I'm gonna talk about a little bit, a few different things, um, very similar, um, stuff that we do. Um, there's a couple of pieces in this that are not exactly the same, um, just so I can show you the differentiators, right? And you guys can kinda ask questions around that. Um, while we are here, obviously, we were, we've been here for 21 years, so that's a really important piece. Um, we've been in the market protecting student data, email, et cetera, for 21 years. So, um, it's privately owned company, we are obviously not selling anytime soon, I can promise you that. Our CEO loves coming to work and helping kids every single day, so if you've ever met Jeff Patterson, um, he, he would definitely be very clear in how he wants to take this to the finish line, so. Um, but we have been here 21 years, we started off with Safe Email before there was Google and Microsoft, moved into LMS, and then actually worked around, uh, the GSM Safety Services about six years ago, is when we really started to protect Google and Microsoft around how kids are communicating email and drive, right? So we are not a filter, we are not a firewall, we are not Chromebook protection, we are not social media, media monitoring, and we are not a parent portal. That's very important for you to understand that. What we do is sit as the insurance to all of those, and I'll explain how that works as we go through this. So 37% of threats about student violence are sent electronically. You guys think that's a big number or a small number? From what you're seeing, even in your district? So for me, I originally, when I got this data from our team, I thought it was a very small number, right? And then when they went through it with me and we were able to identify exactly what that 37% of threats is, that's for the 1,500 school districts and the 4.7 million children we protect specifically at Gaggle. So when you look at it from there, that's a high number with what we've been able to pull, right? 70% of students who attempt suicide tell someone of their plans or give warning signs, it's pretty standard. Um, telling someone of their plans is not talking face to face anymore, guys. And that's the bummer, right? We want them to come to us, we want them to talk to us, we care about their mental health, and, you know, we care about the fact that the bully didn't come out of the womb to bully, right? That kid is in trouble as well. And so it's really important that they are able to do something or we're able to catch something, to be able to allow you as the advisors to kinda make best practice decisions on what to do next, right? To get them the help that they need, and that's what we care about. So, you know, it's very, very common nowadays that these kids are actually opening up a Google Doc, they are writing in white font, they are, we just actually had this happen with Wichita Falls, where we had a group of kids go in about nine pages long, um, a kid wrote in white font specifically in a Google Doc, and then a bunch of other kids were in that chat room. So they created like a little chat room where they joined together, and they were all writing in white font. And so live, we were able to see that, originally based on machine learning algorithm, as we have talked about, as far as word search. And then it was live data coming in where we were able to see them writing because we were highlighting that document. So no one at the district level would've been able to see that. And that's kinda that workaround that we were just talking about where the kids actually can work around the system, right? So that white font piece is a very big one, but this was a child that was talking about killing himself, a couple kids came in and said, you should go ahead and do that, 'cause you're a piece of shit. And then there were other kids that were like, please don't, you're a really good person, right? And it went back and forth and back and forth. And we alerted that district to let them know that there was cause for concern because it was in real time. And the CTO said, Gretchen, I don't see anything. And I said, you have to highlight the doc. And he's an amazing CTO, and he didn't even know that this was going on, this was a trend, right? So that's stuff that we're able to see, and that's the stuff that I wanna point out because, um, it's so very important that the workaround piece, and I'll share some more stories about that with you guys, um, but it's important that you understand that. So Gaggle is committed to providing excellent assistance to our school districts and is sharing meaningful data regarding the use of our solutions. So again, I just explained to you, not a filter, not a firewall, not social media, not Chromebook protection, not parent portal. We're gonna protect all of the above and we'll go through that. Districts are using Office 365 and OneDrive or Gmail and Google Drive for both school and personal use. The personal use piece is not going into their personal use in their own personal private account, it's what they're using based on your acceptable use policies within the district that allows them to actually have email and drive and any devices, right? So anything that they're using in email and drive, we are going to protect from a district standpoint and liability, based on that acceptable use policy. So where your parents sign off and say, yes, our kids have the access to digital technology and we want them to have active learning, that's exactly what we're gonna protect. Our goal is not to protect anything outside of that, although we do see things when they're using their email and drive. So that is what we're gonna do, 76% of concerning incidents are found in students' district drive account. People are shocked by that, they always think it's coming through email, they're getting in a drive because that's the way that they can collaborate from a chatroom standpoint. And Google Classroom nowadays is so popular as well as OneDrive, right? Any questions? All right. So, we are going to combine technology with real people, there are no special steps in this, it's not like there's one level, two level, three level and so on. We basically have what's called Google Safety Management, Gaggle Safety Management, and we are going to literally have anything that would be machine learning algorithm in our proprietary pornography scanner. If there's an alert, it goes directly to a live safety person. We have, have over 200 people certified as well, um, all compliant sociology, psychology, suicide prevention, criminal justice, um, that are actually taking a look at all of that information and making sure that they are going to alert you in real time. Our average real-time alerts in an emergency situation are under an hour. Traditionally, it's between six and 13 minutes. So this is how it works, content analysis, machine learning algorithm, proprietary anti-pornography scanner, is going to analyze word and alert, right? Skin and alert. So our proprietary anti-pornography scanner is gonna detect skin, a lot of times it could be holding something, that skin could be holding something, right? It's gonna detect, detect the weapon, it might be detecting something else that is inappropriate, right? And then the words and the content of the words. It goes immediately to expert review. Our expert review is our team of people that I just described, that are gonna put their own set of eyes on it and identify whether or not it is a false positive or it's a real situation before there's an alert sent. So an example of that is, let's say a flag comes up that says, drop the bomb, right? Bombs, bombs the flag. A lot of times that will be sent to the district in a spreadsheet that says, hey, these are all the word alerts that we're getting as far as what we're seeing so that the district can go through it. Districts cannot comb through all of those spreadsheets, it's not possible. So we're putting our own set of eyes on it and we're determining for you, is this a cause for concern or is not? If it's a cause for concern, we're gonna go ahead and send it to you from a rapid response standpoint, or we're gonna throw it away. Perfect example, right? Let's say we get an alert that is skin-related and it comes in and it's a mother and daughter getting a pedicure. No cause for concern, there's no need to even do anything with it, it goes through, right? However, if we see something, middle school student naked, tied to a bed, sign on her chest saying, help me, that's a huge cause for concern, that's an emergency situation. We are gonna intercept that automatically, 'cause now we have child pornography, so we're gonna intercept that picture, we're gonna quarantine it so it doesn't land on your drive, because it's in a Google Drive account, so we can intercept and quarantine that and hang onto it for you. We are gonna get ahold of you, we're also gonna tag it to NCC, National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, because we are mandated reporters. And we do that for the district, then we get ahold of you guys, let you know what's going on, and we can figure out where that image is gonna go. Best question ever is, are you gonna send us that image? The answer is absolutely not. We are gonna hang onto it until you tell us where you want it to go, because we don't need you to be distributing child pornography. So now we're going to talk about how it works. So this is an example of a safety audit that we did in the Midwest with forty-thousand students. You can see here, safety audit date range. It was about four to six months as far as what we found. They both were dual-drive and dual-email, so they were in Microsoft and Drive, just so you guys know as far as that data, okay? So Google and Microsoft analyzed nine million, six-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand items. So when you look at nine million, six-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand items, which is what we do with the machine learning and the proprietary pornography scanner, that's a lot to review, right, in a six-month window? From there, suspicious items that were flagged were three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand. So that three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand that was flagged could go right into a spreadsheet and keep going to tech director, "Hey, we got an alert, bomb, gun." But, whatever, right? Lots of alerts, three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, that's not what we do. At that point, that three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand went directly to our safety team. We reviewed all three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand documents and determined that out of that eight-hundred-and-forty-eight were the biggest cause for concern, with five-thousand-six-hundred-and-eight-two being violations. So I want to talk you through how we actually determine that so that you guys know what we're looking at and how much we weed through a lot of the false positives and we'll be able to give you the accurate numbers that you need. So the fact of the matter is, if we send you something, you can be darn sure that it's accurate, and I'll walk through that with you. So violations are our least cause for concern. Those are situations where it could be vulgar profanity as far as language, and it could also be situations of like anyone in a bathing suit sharing a picture. You know, this heart, "I look so cute," right? But they're fully clothed, they're on the beach, they're with other friends. Sixth grade through twelfth grade, we don't really worry about that a lot of times because they're going to do that stuff, right? They're going to share that stuff, they're going to say the F-word, they might say ass. Those are violations. You guys can get inundated with violations where we're saying, "Okay, so-and-so said the F-word." "So-and-so decided to share a picture again with her in a bathing suit" or "her in a crop top with, you know, short shorts," right? At the higher level, it's the younger kids, littler ones that we worry about with violations most of the time. I'm not going to tell you what to do in the district as far as what's best practices for you guys. You know your kids and your families best with how you want those violations to come in. I can just tell you that as far as fifth grade and under, we have seen trending from a district standpoint most of the time with a violation. If it is the profanity or if it is inappropriate pictures that are not pornography or child pornography. Those are the situations with them being fifth grade or under where they do want the alert and email simply saying, "Hey, you know, we saw that this kid is saying the F-word," right? Because if you get them at ten years or under, you can sit down with them and have better digital citizenship practices as they move older. A lot of times, it scares them, and then they're like, "Oh my gosh, something's happening, someone's watching me." I will tell you, one of the things that people ask us all the time is, "Okay, if the community knows that Gaggle is in place, do the kids stop saying things that are harmful or stop doing things that are harmful because they know that someone's watching them and they're going to go to another tool?" It's not the case. We have monitored it for a very long time. We always hope that that will be the case, that at some point, the kids will stop reacting and stop doing some things and make their choices as far as digital citizenship. But you guys know the same as we do, right? You have cameras in your buildings. A lot of times, we see repeat stuff. It's the same thing in their digital playground. They want to have that immediate attention, response, et cetera. And so it's our job just to monitor that and review that so that we can keep you guys up to date on what's going on with the kids and actually help them get the help that they need. A lot of times, too, they're crying out for help, right? So they're journaling as if they were in a diary because they want someone to help them. And so that's the biggest win for me every day. That's why I go to work every day is when I see that kid that's in trouble and we're able to intervene, and it's pretty amazing. So that's violations, very low tier. You don't even need to get the alerts, we can turn those off for you, we can leave them on. We actually do everything that we need to do for the district individually. I can give you trends, things that are pretty typical. At the end of the day, our safety team comes in to actually work with the district one-to-one with your best practices, your safety plan that you already have in place. So that is violation. QCon is our biggest concern. That's the column before the storm. That's why when you look at that eight-hundred-and-forty-eight number, it's a QCon and the PSSs that we're concerned about. The QCon's column before the storm, that is the warning sign, right? That's when the kids are talking about cutting. They're talking about suicide, but there's no end date or a timeframe around it. That is situations of cartoon or anime pornography that we see coming in as well as professional pornography. In those cases, we're cyberbullying, big. That's when we start to see these kids cyberbullying, right? And we need to let you guys know what's going on. In that case, we're going to go ahead and send you an email so that you're alerted about it. However, we're not going to call you in an emergency situation. The email will suffice because we don't see an emergency situation going on where there's a timeframe around it. Does that make sense? Okay. PSS is emergency situation. That is imminent threat to a child, we know that for a fact. We have determined that we're, cause for concern is there. That's going to be a situation where it's rape, it's a family dynamic that is a problem, where you need to send over someone for a wellness check. That could be situations of suicide where we know for sure there's an end date to it, where a child is talking about a weapon, talking about a timeframe, child pornography specifically, that shared child pornography distribution is going on. In those cases, we are going to not only email you with information as to what's going on, again, we're not going to send you the picture. We're going to email you. We're also going to send you a group text at your individual building level or at the administration level. And if you do not want to have the text specifically or you want an additional call, we will do that as well. I will tell you, like we were talking about, everybody is worried about being inundated with those calls. Last year, between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, only seventy-two emergency calls went out out of the seven-thousand that we had. So it's not that you're going to get inundated. Understand that if we do call you or we do text you and it's in the evening or the weekend, it is an emergency situation for a child, and we know that for a fact. And we also can set it up where we're working with your SROs, we're working with a certain person that can actually be on call either weekly, on the weekend, in the evenings, et cetera. And so we'll make that work. And if you wanted us to actually send it to the local police department, we can do that as well.
So I have a question around
Sure.
the scale of the suspicious items viewed, three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, down to the actual item of eight-hundred-and-forty-eight. That's human review going down to eight-hundred-and-forty-eight?
Correct.
So how many people do you have working for you? Is this forty thousand records or forty thousand?
So we have, we have over two-hundred people that are working for us.
But this is just, I don't know, the sense of scale is not making sense to me.
So what's happening is it hits for the machine learning algorithm first with the word search and identifies, "Okay, here's a combination of words, this is a problem." Flags a live person, that live person is going to open it up. And this is in a six-month period, keep that in mind, right? So they're going to open it up.
But how many other customers do you have that are hitting on that two-hundred live payment? It just...
Lots, lots.
So it's just, yeah.
Yeah.
It just, I'm just piling my head around them.
No, I totally understand.
A human review can't be a long human review to...
So that's, yeah, so when it's a, I'll give you an example of, a perfect example of this, okay? That would be a quick example. You wouldn't normally have an algorithm that would hit "but," right? Like B-U-T-T. That's not going to be like a big deal. For us, because we're so advanced in our algorithm, having done this for twenty-one years, it flagged BUT with a young lady who was in second grade. She was in a Google Drive document doing a Daily Five, second grader, working with a couple of other friends. She ended up typing out the word. They segued from their Daily Five learning experience to a chat, and she said, "Hey, are any of you going to be with your dad this weekend?" And a couple of the girls were like, "Yes, no, whatever." We don't care about that, right? It's when it flagged "but." "Oh, do you guys play the butt game?" It, she spelled it B-U-T. It still flagged us. Our team was like, "Okay, we'll look at it quick." They opened it up, they can determine, okay, sentence, arrangement, et cetera, what is going on here, right? And immediately saw a traffic going on with, "Do you play the butt game?" It was an abusive situation. I don't need to go into detail, I think you guys have an idea. It was a wonderful win because we had a second grader who was being abused by her dad, and she didn't even know she was being abused. And so that's, that's the stuff that we see. So it's very fast. They can, it's like the drop the bomb, right? Drop the bomb, if they know that they made a great basketball shot, they're going to see that and be like, "Ah, dismiss, next," right? So, but great question, no, I appreciate it. Anything else, you guys, that you want to touch on? Okay, so I'm going to give you some examples of what we see. And they're specifically child examples that came from the safety audit that we had done. This first one here, a photograph of an underage female's genitalia is exposed. So that was sitting actually on the district drive. So when we did the safety audit, we had gone backwards to give them a proof of concept, right? So they wanted a proof of concept. We normally do that with either a safety audit or we do it with a live pilot, and they decided to go backwards and get that information. And so when we actually got the information, we determined that they actually had a photograph of child pornography that was sitting on the drive. If you were actually using Gaggle, what would have happened? What we explained to them is we would have intercepted that photograph again, we would have quarantined it, and we would have sent you a message. Understand that if it's child pornography specific, because we tag it to NICMC and because we handle the liability for the district, we're not going to call you in the middle of the night because we already have it handled for you. So, you know, we'll send you an email if someone wanted to participate on a Saturday or a Sunday or what have you and like respond to it, right? But if you came in on Monday morning, it would be just fine because we're already handling it the way that you would handle it, okay? Here's another one. "A video within a female student's Google Drive shows a male student saying goodbye and taking a handful of pills in a public bathroom." This is a big debatable conversation with the school district that we're talking about here because, again, this was a safety audit. And it's a video with female students. Google Drive shows a male student saying goodbye and taking a handful of pills in a public bathroom. We would certainly text you, call you, email you. This is an emergency situation especially because it's on one of your students' accounts, right? And there was multiple students involved. The interesting thing was them saying, "Oh, are you sure they weren't making a film documentary or a video about drugs?" And I said, "That's really fair, right? That's a very fair question. But would you rather have us err on a sign of security? If that's the false positive you get from us, I think everybody would take that all day." And they were like, "Yep." Because you don't know. You know, again, you know your families, you know your students best, and we give you the information so that you can go ahead and do due diligence around that. "My parents knew you had physically hurt me. They saw the mark you left on my neck from you strangling me, the bruise from you slapping me, and put two and two together. They knew I was lying when I said things like, 'Oh, it's nothing, I just fell.'" So in this, this scenario, this would not be an emergency situation if Gaggle was doing this individually right now. So this is really tough to listen to and to see, but it would not be an emergency situation because this child is talking about something that's happened before. Again, it's two people talking about it, but we feel that we can do diligence by sending you an email so you can check up on the situation because it's not an emergency situation right now, it's a past experience. "I'm so sorry, if only I would have realized how much of a disgrace I am sooner than maybe I'd already killed myself rather than chickening out and tossing the suicide note away. Hopefully, this time will be different. By the time anyone reads this, I hope to be dead." That obviously is an emergency situation as far as we're concerned. So I'm going to tell you a story. I don't know if you guys have heard this story before, but this is something that we're very, we're very passionate about. We actually have talked with parents, we've talked to the head of the police department, the CTO, everybody that was involved in this. In Wisconsin, there was a situation with a young lady who was a junior in high school. She sent a suicide note to her friend before school started in the morning saying, "I'm going to take my life today, thank you for being a great friend. I'm going to shoot down everybody that ever does anything mean to you, but I hate it here, I'm done." And she sent that email to her girlfriend. What we are able to do with email, and especially in cyberbullying situations, is we can intercept that email before it lands on the recipient's watch, right? So if a child's being cyberbullied, they never know that they're being cyberbullied because we're intercepting that, and that's one thing that we can do automatically. In this case, we were able to intercept that suicide note because we saw it was a suicide note. We immediately contacted the district. And again, this is before school has started, correct? So we got ahold of the assistant superintendent, believe it or not, who was not on the original safety individual building, but we couldn't get anyone and had to go to administration. Assistant superintendent answers the phone, says, "I'm on my way up there, thank you very much." When we hear that, we step off. We know that someone's handling it, and you're going to do your due diligence. A year later, we get a call from the chief of police within the community saying, "We want to tell you what actually happened. Thank you so much. We'd like to speak with you at any event that you go to because this changed the better for this kid." What ended up happening was, she had already left for school. The school district called the house to find out if she was still home. She had left. They immediately called emergency, crew up to the school. They started to comb through the school before school started, and they ended up finding her in a bathroom, and she was hanging from a bathroom stall. So she had hung herself. They cut her down within thirty seconds of her passing away. And that was in a matter of six minutes and thirty-six seconds from when we got the alert to when they were cutting her down, and she's alive today. And so I wanted to just tell you as far as that real time and what we see, it's tough, right? It's tough for our team. Our team is literally, they need to be healthy for you guys. So their mental health, what we do for them and the different programs that we put them through is awesome. But, you know, it's real, right? And we don't want that to happen to any of the districts that we work with. So I wanted to share that because this is an example of what we would have seen where that could have happened. So we have a safety management dashboard. This is really awesome in the fact that you guys can actually take a look every day as far as administration or individual building contacts and get a really good pulse on the individual building and what's happening. So your principal can look and say, "Okay, where are we having repeat offenders with these kids? What are we seeing as far as, why is there so much suicide self-harm going on? Or, you know, why is there so much going on with vaping and drugs?" They can see on a daily basis the alerts that we're providing, whether you have the violations on or not. You'll still be able to see them and talk about it. And then administration can actually go in and see every building and so that they get a better idea as far as professional development, SEL, that kind of thing. Relief of liability, really important for you to understand. I know that we talked about data privacy. We're obviously Fair Pacific, COPA compliant. We have to go through government standards, too. And so it's important for you to understand that if you were to look on common sense privacy policy, Gaggle did pass. And that's a really important thing, do your research on that. Gaggle has a SOC two audit. If you know what a SOC two audit is, that is major. So that is something that's really important. And then as far as district data privacy agreement, the one thing I always ask is, make sure that the district data privacy agreement is signed by anyone that is looking at your children's information, which obviously we do. Oh, we also work with ICAC, too, which is awesome. So they're partnered with us, Internet Crimes Against Children as far as the trafficking and the stuff that we see there. They're great, we can call them at any time, especially with trends. We send our teams to go and work with them so that they understand how to be better prepared to protect the children as far as what they're seeing and what they should be alerted on if a child does go missing, even if they run away, right? What are we looking for? This is the Gaggle Unique Features List, and I want to make sure that you have us take a picture of it. I can send you guys this for sure, if you'd like to take a look at it. These are the things that actually stand out versus, you know, other services that are on the market. We, too, will actually see a lot of social media by accident. So when I talked about, like, we don't have a parent portal, we don't have the social media piece, again, we're only wanting to look at your tools based on your acceptable use policy. We're not out there to go and be a parent, but we want you to be able to talk to your parents and get them the help, right? And I'm going to show you an example of that with a parent. But I can tell you first and foremost, from a parent portal standpoint, we tried to do that a little while ago. We dabbled with that. We had too many issues as far as data privacy. There were too many things where parents were actually seeing something in a portal and then seeing another kid's name, and then they were getting mad, and they were going over to the house, and they were like, "Why are you bullying my kid?" And it was, it was crazy, right? So we eliminated that. So we eliminated that. We think it's better for you guys to just determine, okay, what's the situation? And reach out to the parent accordingly. There are situations where maybe the parent shouldn't be getting the alerts because a lot of the abuse might be happening at home. And if a child is actually reaching out or communicating, it becomes a real struggle because they don't have a chance in heck, right? Because now they're tailing. So those are things that we take very seriously. You know, student sexuality, them being able to work through that. A parent doesn't necessarily know how to work through that and then they're gonna call the district anyways and ask for help, right? So at least you guys can kind of traffic that as far as making sure that they're healthy. So that's a really important thing. As far as social media, we're gonna see anything on social media related to a child signing up with their email account that would go into an app, for example. So it could be Snapchat, it could be Instagram, it could be, you know, Twitter, it could be Facebook. If they use their email and their password to get in there, we're gonna be able to see a lot of that IMDM texting that's in private mode that you guys wouldn't normally see that's in public mode, right? Because they're going back and forth. So in those cases, we are gonna see that. If they actually are using their phone and it says for the first time, "Hey, would you like to download your images into the cloud?", right? And they say yes, because they're all excited in fifth grade. And then they type in their school district email and their school district password. That's the drive that they're gonna download those pictures to. Even if later on, they get their own private account, they don't always remember to change the drive account. And so when they're actually syncing their phone or dropping in pictures or taking screenshots, a lot of the times it will go into the district drive and that's where we're able to intercept it. So it doesn't go to the district drives that we're protecting you with E-Rate compliance and SIPA, obviously. So that's where we can help you with that. So we're not looking at their individual devices. We're not looking at their individual emails. We're not looking at their individual, you know, social media. You guys obviously don't give your kids social media, correct? Does anyone, do you guys give your kids Facebook or Twitter?
We can give it to them.
Like, do you issue them a Facebook or Twitter account through the district? So if you did, we would be protecting that. But since you don't, we're protecting what you are issuing them, which is your email and your password. So, but we do see stuff on the backend, right? Does anyone know what the average seventh grader, the average seventh grader, how many Instagram accounts they have?
Eight.
I love you. You're higher, six. But six is a lot. I mean, think about it. You need to have a username and a password, right? For every single thing you get on, you have to have an email and password. So I can't even keep up with my code. Anyways, so those are some of the things that we do there. Obviously, we have four different hubs that collect all of our data. Pennsylvania, Texas, California, as well as Illinois. So that there's never an issue of that collective data not being protected. All of our employees are based here in the US and are communicating here out of the US, also in all the time zones, so that's important for you to know. But I'll send that to you too, so you have it.
Do you monitor multiple languages or just do one?
We do Spanish. Additional offerings by Gaggle, professional development. So we have onsite professional development with educators that come here and actually work with you guys as far as best practices, how to implement, what your safety team will look like as far as individual building level, what do you want to do from a district standpoint? So we'll work with you on that. We also have, if you wanted a refresher, we can do it based on webinar or what have you afterwards. Archiving of email and drive, it's really important for you to understand that archiving for thirty days is free to you guys as the package. And specifically because if we ever need to go back and a kid tries to delete something or add something, we have that for you. And so that's an important piece. But if you wanted additional archiving, we can do that. We also, everybody loves this, we can protect staff and faculty. I'll tell you, that's always a very slippery slope for us, but we can protect it. And it's been a very important thing in the last nine months because people are so concerned about that health and wellness. That there was a situation in Lorraine, actually, where a principal took his life. And they reached out to us and said, you know, "We didn't know." And we didn't have any information that this person was struggling. And they found out later that a couple of teachers had been talking to him and what have you. And so they've turned it on for that specifically. But obviously, for you guys to understand, even though we can monitor staff, if you guys are concerned about student-faculty relationships, we're gonna catch it on the student's side automatically anyways. So that will not be a concern, just so you know. So Speak Up Safety Tip Line, we too have a safety tip line. And that was developed about three years ago. It's awesome as far as the kids being able to see something, say something. It's also a great tool for the parents. I would definitely encourage you guys, if you want to go with Speak Up, to provide that to the parents because they can come in anonymously and share some information that they might be seeing in the community and what have you. So I love that. We also offer Hangouts and Teams Monitoring in both Google and in Microsoft. And that's a great tool as far as you guys having texting communications between like faculty or club leaders or coaches with the kids. Instead of going to text, a lot of times we have RIND or we have other things that they can go into, right? But you can actually have it monitored if it's working through there. So people really like that feature. And then integration and protection with LMS and filter partnerships. We can work with Learning Management System as well as filter partnerships where we can actually monitor and protect any of the filter data that is delivered into the district. We can cross-check that with our professional safety team. And so this is a really special thing that I'm gonna read out loud to you guys. This is from a principal in Pennsylvania. Dear friends at Gaggle, this, we just got this in November. Dear friends at Gaggle, I'm not sure I've met any of you. I'm a member of insert and have seen either your colleagues present your solution at one of many meetings you have attended. In one of your presentations, you shared that you saved five hundred and forty-two lives in the 2017-2018 school year. I'm sure that increased for the 2018-2019 school year. When I saw that figure, I thought that maybe it was inflated for marketing purposes. As of last night, I've become a full-blown believer in the power of your product. Below is an email I sent to my cabinet. It goes beyond the power of Gaggle and to the need to be bold into our budgeting and to stand up for products that save and protect our children. While some may believe that they are frivolous or above and beyond a school district's responsibility, we have witnessed firsthand the return on our investment. It equates to one young person's life, which is so much more valuable than the money we have spent on all of our products and solutions. In this era, it truly does take a village to deal with the issues our children are faced with. When necessary, providing life-saving efforts. Thanks to every one of you, we made a difference to this young person and family. So I wanted to share that with you. And then I wanted to share a recent blog with a mom that did not want to provide her name and her son. What ended up happening is, I'll give you a quick synopsis. This mother was notified because her child had sent a suicide note. They were working with Gaggle. The mom ended up becoming super ticked off at the fact that she had no idea her child was suicidal. This was a high school student. She was thrilled that the district contacted her and let her know and she could get him home. She was mad about is that it was so focused on the high school. So this district in particular only focused on the high school and not the younger grades. And she started to create blogs and talk about it. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about what we pulled. But this was as of February third, that she actually did a blog with us and asked to keep her name private. But I just wanted to let you know the Matthew in this is her son who was really struggling. So, "After learning the solution was only being used at the highest spot, I was angry," she said. "I asked them, 'What if something happens? Would you want that on your hands? Gaggle gives me reassurance as a parent,'" Patricia. "Gaggle makes me believe that for the kid that needs the help, there's a great responsibility that they will find it." I put in here, "While some parents are concerned about student privacy when it comes to reviewing students' digital activity, Gaggle's safety management team gave Patricia peace of mind." "If it's going to protect my child or save my child, I don't care how you get the information, just get it," she said. "And that's what I believe Gaggle is doing. It's getting struggling kids the help that they need because we can't do it on our own. I don't have a filter at home. I have to trust my kids," she said. "I teach them about digital citizenship because they don't want something out there. They shouldn't, because if they don't want something out there, they shouldn't post it. They'll say, 'I deleted it,' or it goes away in ten minutes." And I tell them, "It doesn't. Anybody can take a screenshot." The permanence of digital activity can be a difficult concept for teenagers to understand. It will never go away, Patricia. They have to realize that." And this is a great way for these kids to make those mistakes and allow you and those parents to have those conversations with them so that hopefully they don't make that mistake again. So I wanted to share that. And this is a tech director out of Texas. And this is a piece that's really important for me as far as giving the time back. You know, we all talk about how we don't have the time to go through all of these different things that are alerts that you guys receive. It's not possible. I was just in a district yesterday that said to me, "Well, we didn't know that that was happening. We had done a safety audit with them." And they were using a filter campaign. And they said, "Well, we didn't know, like, that this was happening when you're doing this." And I said, "Well, why didn't your filter catch it?" And they said, "Well, well, because they might have, but we aren't able to go through all of those alerts." And I said, "Well, that's what we're doing, is we're going through all of that for you so that you guys can actually take care of your kids." And we all know kids don't come to school if they don't feel safe. And kids certainly don't learn if they don't feel safe, right? And a lot of times, we have no capability of knowing those smiley, happy, good-grade kids are just broken inside. They're the ones that didn't get invited to a party and saw a bunch of friends decide to bully them and abandon them, right? And they come to school and just have to get through the day and we don't realize anything's wrong. And then all of a sudden, we've all been in that situation, a life is lost and everybody says, "How'd that happen?", right? And so that's where I'm so happy that you guys are bringing me in because that's the courage that you guys are obviously interested in taking to be able to take care of your kids. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I have a question and it's really for either group because it's all about what you find and then what you're reporting. And so I'm picturing a kid says, "I hate my life. I can't be myself. I can't tell my family or my friends at school that I'm gay." And I'm just gonna kill myself, right? Do you then report this kid's in crisis and his reporter's gonna kill himself? Or does the kid get outed to whoever you're reporting to?
So I, for us, what we're gonna do is we're gonna contact the administrator that's there and we're going to say, "Here is the situation. This is what we saw. This is the circumstance," so that they can go ahead and handle it. Most of our districts will have a conversation, just be like, "Hey, how are you doing?" They don't say, "Hey, we caught your document and saw that you wrote this down." It's more of, "Hey, how are you doing? You seem kind of sad. Is everything going okay? I noticed that maybe you're writing your essays that are a little bit dark. We just wanted to check and see that you're okay because the teacher brought it to our attention." So the majority of the districts are really good at being able to make up a story around what it is that they found to help the kid, right? Like, I think a lot of the times, we're all kind of trained as educators to not call out anybody else or not to call out the circumstance around it, but figure out a way to get that child to talk. And it's just a way for something that you wouldn't have known, to be able to have that conversation. But you're gonna get a great detail from us of exactly what is going on. And if there is multiple things, a lot of times we get essays that will be like, you know, creative writing essays, right? Kids write creative writing essays. They have every right to write a creative writing essay. But then our team, because they see the pulse on the word algorithm, they start to identify, okay, this is a repeat thing. They go backwards if they're concerned, to kind of look deep and dive. I mean, if there's eight essays and they keep getting darker and darker and they're related to bringing a weapon to campus or how they want to blow up the school, we want to send that to you so that you know that child, you know what to do with it, right? So, you know, we don't advise on how your best practice would be to communicate with the kid. But we found that most of our districts kind of work around that anyways, if that makes sense.
And we do the same. We send the exact message to the school, you know, so they can see the context as well as anything else related to that. And a lot of, a lot of school administrators, counselors are bound by regulations, admin guidelines, laws on what they can and can, especially when it comes to sexuality, talk to a parent about when it comes to it. But we do feel it's important for them to get the full context of the messaging. As you said, they have backgrounds, they have training in how to have those communications and conversations with the students.
I mean, that's part of us too, as far as when we come in. That's part of the PD, right? When those questions come up, our team will say, "This is what we advise you." You know, they're educators as well when they come in and meet with people one-to-one. So that's a really good dump in the beginning is to be able to have that conversation and do the professional development best practices around what you guys want, I think.
I want to thank you both for coming in and giving such thorough presentations this evening. Very, very, very informative and I think you've given us time to think about. Now, certainly, sort of closing remarks on this.
No, I just thank you guys for your time this evening. And like Dan had said, I think he gave us a lot to think and talk about. There's been a lot of immediate conversation around it, conversation we've had here. So it was great to just hear specifically from you guys about some of the things you'd offer and be able to provide so we can have an informed conversation moving forward.
Absolutely. No, thank you for including us. Appreciate it.
You'll send your decks?
Yep, absolutely. You bet. You too.
We also have an audit for the district for a small period of time and we can shoot that.
Okay. Perfect. Just appreciate it. Um, okay, and then move on to the last one. Sean, do you want to kick this off?
I do, because you can either thank me or blame me for this. Charlie and I, really, because when we sat down and talked to Steve in our two-on-one, you know, what we talked about is, you know, there's been stories, you know, that kind of come here and there across our district for years about the student experience or even staff experience. And, you know, not great stories, particularly in how we treat our kids of color and just the atmosphere in the schools, right? The stories have been there and they're still there and they come in all the time. And what we wanted to find out and what we wanted to talk about was not to sit there and say, "Hey, I heard this happened. Tell me about that." We didn't really want to look backwards a whole lot, but we really wanted to have the conversation of, "You guys have all heard the stories too and are doing things to try and help that culture and climate in your own schools." And we wanted to know, you know, what kind of things are you putting into place? And what kind of things do you see are working or not working? Or things you want to try and improve on? Things that, I don't know, I guess as a board, we could help you with trying to improve on or just really, I mean, Charlie can speak to it too. We had that conversation of really wanting to know what's happening now to try and stop all those stories from happening, right? Because we know they're out there and I know you guys are doing things, so.
I just want to say too that from my perspective, the recent events at Liberty especially involved a group of students, almost all students of color, meeting separately from the other students. And saying very frankly, very, very frankly, what they were experiencing as students in our school district. I'm not calling it a liberty, but that's what happened at Liberty. And I think the staff there is well aware of that. And so I'm really interested in how the staff there and the staff of the other high schools what we're learning and what we're planning on, how we're planning on using what we're learning to make the situation better for the kids in all of these schools.
So I guess the data I'd connect before maybe asking you guys to comment just on some of the things they have doing moving forward is we, you know, bumped it at committee meeting and had that work session talk, right, about where we think this, some of these student situations fit into the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan. And that was really kind of centered on that goal three, right? Climate, culture. What are the things we commit to as assistant level? And then what are the things that the building, you know, specifically does to support some of that work? And so when we come back with those reports around the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan, I think you'll see some of these things that they share with you accounted for in that plan, you know, whether they're system-wide or whether there's specific things we've done there. But I appreciate your framing of the question about, okay, what have we learned? And what are we doing moving forward and keeping it on that? So otherwise, I don't know if one of you guys wants to jump in first or...
I mean, it's a heavy topic. I mean, without a doubt, and it's one that we live every single day, you know? As far as the stories getting back, I don't know that they do get back to us to the extent that maybe somebody bends your ear. Occasionally, when I hear it, it's thrown at, I'd say, I'd use it with too much levity, but thrown at me when there's an angry, you know, we'll just say it offhand and mark, "Well, that's the way you treat this class of students," or whatever. And, you know, but that's the same parent I'm gonna call the next day. And I'm gonna say, "We're still working this problem. So we're, you know, we're going to work that problem, whatever it is. If it's a conflict between peers, if it's a conflict between a teacher and an aftermiored student, we're gonna work that problem, whatever it is. And we're gonna continue with it." And so I hear those things in that regard sometimes. Said, you know, "This happened six years ago or two years ago or three days ago or whatever." But, you know, I know that, you know, if I'm feeling good about the process that we followed, you know, when working that, then I'm going to be pretty confident that I'm gonna come back to them next day and say, "Let's continue to work on this because we have to solve it." Now, as far as, well, there's this manifest, a lot of things going on here. But one thing we like to do is, I think we all like to give a voice to our students and try to find out from them, you know, where they're at. And for our most at-risk students, it's, you know, a lot of times, there's a lot of pathos happening, you know? And so you're working through a lot of, whether it's adverse childhood conditions or whatever, you know, you're getting through a lot of issues. And we're training ourselves to try to focus on exactly what that student needs and try to block out everything, everything else. I don't know that I've given you a very direct answer here. I'm trying to give you the most honest one I can. But we are, we have issues that come to our desk every single day with minority students, non-minority students, but certainly, you know, we just have to deal with them each as they come. As far as bigger things that we're trying, I mean, we can all go through, and we think we will tonight, some of the things that we're doing. Our newest thing that we're trying is a thing called Green and Gold Academy, where we're trying to not have, for so long, you ask what wasn't working. What isn't working is if you take a bunch of kids that are experiencing school failure, put them in a room and say fixtures on. You know, it's like, we'll give you one well-meaning adult and now let's try it there. We cannot create the culture of success. We have not figured out how to create the culture of success when the culture of the room is dominated by students who are experiencing class school failure, not going to classes, not participating in the school culture. So what we try at this time is to just get the students that were succeeding really well, students that are doing average and some students that were not doing well, put them into these different groups and have them compete with each other to do, show good attendance and keep up with the grades and assignments. And they get rewards for doing that collectively. So try to create a discreet core. Why we wanted to try this is we saw it work in some of our athletic groups where the coach was monitoring what these very diverse group of kids were doing. And we had, you know, out of sixty-eight boys, we had one F. He said, "Well, that's really a good result." "How did you do that?" "Well, I created these teams and I had, you know, team leaders and we had people checking in, you know, and we offered, you know, study time. And, you know, we tried to duplicate that structure as a way to try to foster connection to school and motivation to kind of keep with it."
Is that a new thing this year?
That's this year, yeah. I mean, and like I said, we're all trying, and it's getting to the, you know, point about discrimination, just, that's why we're spending two, well, two solid years as with our faculties on anti-bias training and anti-racist training. You know, we've been working on those, but it's large and it's conceptual. And when the rubber hits the road, the students still have to be in the seats to learn. And then they still have to then meet the teacher at some point afterward. Teachers have to learn how to motivate kids better. They have to be able to come with curriculum that's relevant to students and tie that together. Yeah, we need to do a better job of that, but we're doing the job we are. And we're not, we're trying to learn from the, you know, what we've done in the past two years, which I think has been pretty robust with us learning about inclusive bias training and the readings that we've done just on, you know, being anti-racist. I'm sorry to meander along.
I'd say, Charlie, on our end, I'd echo what Greg said, but I would add that we don't try to problem-solve this all by ourselves. So Scott doesn't try to problem-solve it all by himself. The Liberty team doesn't try to problem-solve it. So we involve Matt, we involve Laura. She absolutely, in our instance, came out and was absolutely an awesome resource. We involve the ILT. So in terms of the specific incident, we use those folks. And then in terms of the follow-up, ILT has that conversation, that's my instructional leadership team, about how we readjust our professional development. We absolutely did readjust our professional development. So we started the first couple in early January and late December. We're on Cultural Competency Continuum and kind of where we all are and how we shift back and forth. And we too are starting to do some ACEs training. We had an awesome ACEs workshop last Thursday. We brought Debbie Bennett in from over at Weber. I was gonna say Wood, I don't know why, but at Weber. And so we're trying to school up our staff as well. And it's a very difficult situation. We rely on our PBIS a lot. Many of you were here in the fall before the election and we have a robust PBIS model and our Bolt Matrix. And we're seeing our discipline data just drop like rocks. And so it's having an effect. But when we have students behave badly, we deal with that as well. Yeah.
Just an analogy, I was at a meeting with Laura last night and one of the things she said, I think generally, was racism in schools is hard to fix, but it is fixable. So I'm glad you were so eager to thank her.
Yeah, she's an awesome resource. We'd love to have Laura out and having conversations and trying to get better.
Cool. I have, yeah, I think just globally first and specifics. And this may sound like a cliche, but at City High School for ten years, we have focused on the word relationships. We believe that's in the DNA of what our school's all about. Very proud of the relationships we have between students and staff. I think that is just something we teach them and is pride in. And we work in a really intentional way to try to make sure kids have connections with adults in the building and they know who their go-to person is to look out for them. And we really do work in a systematic way of trying to make sure that's the case. We have a very positive environment at City High. We have a very positive environment at City High. I would invite all of you to come to our schools. Our doors are open to you. Come see for yourself. Don't take my word for it. I think you'll be very impressed with what you see in our hallways. I think you'll be very impressed when you talk to our students and you ask them about caring adults that they have in the building. You know, for every one student that may, you know, one student's too many. If someone is feeling negative, we had a, I think my part of the reason I was summoned here was an article in the school newspaper that was talking about disproportionate suspension data district-wide. They have district data, not city-specific data, and that's true. That's something we need to confront and continue to work on. But in that article, there was a student that was quoted as saying he felt that, as an African-American male, he felt like he was being targeted in the hallway as being late for class and that type of thing. Certainly, we have all supervisors that encourage kids to get to class on time and we try to do that in a very positive way. We definitely think that it's extremely important that students are in the class on time. So that's definitely, that's not surprising to me that there would be an interaction if someone's late for class, that they're gonna be asked to get to class on time. And again, our expectation is to do that in a positive, professional, kind, caring way. But I do believe that for every one student that might feel that way, there's gonna be fifty that, that are having an awesome experience and I really do believe that. But again, don't take my word for it. I invite you into our school to talk with students and see for yourself. We're very proud of what happens at City High every day and encourage you to come visit with kids. One of the things that we've had success with and we need to continue to go farther with is continuing to hire staff members of color, staff members that look like our students. It's a goal for our whole district. We all try hard to do that. It's a challenge for some positions and we wanna, we wanna continue our recruiting efforts and ability to do that. We hear loud and clear from our students that that matters and that that's important. We have, in response, we have a group at City called the Student Diversity Equity Council. It's a group of students designed specifically to, to confront issues like this and have these kinds of conversations and keep advising us on what do we need to do? How can we keep improving? What's important? So that group met recently and definitely that was one of the things loud and clear that came out of that meeting is to keep that up. They were so complimentary of many of the, the staff members that we do have that are African-American and they just said, keep hiring people like that. Of our immediate supervisory team, the, the group that, that does supervise hallways and works on frontline with monitoring student, student issues, we have five members of our team are African-American. Antirio Nimmers is a leader at City High, is one of the most important people in our building. Malcolm Moore, Jacory Walker, the director of our Student Advisory Center, Jerry Coleman, our dean of students, Brendan Swager, study hall monitor and head of our state basketball coach, these guys are on the front lines of working with students. And so that matters and, and those guys have had a tremendous impact. And I give those five individuals tremendous amount of credit for the reason that I think our environment is very positive at school and, and we definitely want to continue to recruit and retain outstanding people like that. I, I shared with Matt the other day, Antirio Nimmers is a parent educator salary and he's, he's in a hall monitor position. He might be one, he is, he is one of the most important people in our high school and we need to keep him at City High. You know, I get credit for knowing kids' names and that's, I'm not as sharp as I used to be on that, but Antirio Nimmers knows their names. And I stand there and they walk by and I'm sure that he's every single kid in my name. It's just been inspiring. So really proud of our staff and of those guys. And like Scott said, we mentioned PBIS and I think that's something that more and more we're really delving into at City High and finding success with and continuing to grow and improve. So we're excited about replicating some of that good work that's been done and bringing that to City High also. I have one more thing. We, I, I also wanted to use this opportunity to continue to make an appeal for our school district to continue to examine our slate of activities that we have. It's a really important part of high school. High school is what happens during the school day and that's what happens with their, their activity. Everybody wants to find something special to be a part of. It's really important for kids to feel a sense of ownership and belonging at school and know that they're a part of something. And we have got to take a good look at that and I, I try not to miss any opportunity to bring up that issue. I feel really strongly about it. We have a number of positive examples of this at City High where I think we've been innovative and we have created activities that are higher interest and more aligned with what kids want to be a part of to, to reflect our student body in 2020. But our district can do more in this area. And that's not a criticism, but it's just a call to action. My particular interest at the moment is the fine arts program. We have one of the greatest fine arts programs, certainly as a district, probably the greatest in the state of Iowa. And, and it's, it's not representative, in my opinion, of our student body. And so a goal that I have set is what else can we do? You know, we created, we created a fitness and dance PE class that's designed to be, you know, part PE and part dance class and they, they have a recital in the auditorium. That's an awesome day when that happens. We have a choir elective class called Hear My Voice that I'm desperately trying to get going at a higher level. We've had some success with it, but it's not where I want it to be. But that's an elective choir class where kids can, can practice and perform the type of music that they're interested in. And they do some together as a group, then they do others individually or in small groups and it culminates in a recital. So we want more kids that parents come and watch and this is good. But our slate of activities is very much, overall, very much the same as it was when I was, when I graduated from school at least in nineteen ninety-two. And I think that we can continue to broaden what we offer kids. You know, we pay two full-time band teachers as we should. I don't want to erode those programs. These are outstanding programs, but they're very traditional. And, and I look at activities like step or drum corps, you know, drill, I don't even know. But, but there's more, I think, that we could do and so I don't mean to steer the conversation in that direction, but that's an area, a passion of mine. And one of my goals before I'm done is to continue to reshape the slate of co-curricular activities that we have at City to be more reflective of our student body and I just don't want it to look exactly the same. I want to keep growing those opportunities for things we kids be a part of. But that's part of how we approach it.
I'm just delighted to hear you say that, Charlie.
Yeah, we're, we're working hard.
So what, because to me, that sounds like kind of a building decision. What band teacher you hire, what could the board do to diversify? Because I don't think you want us saying, you need all these step programmers, you know, at that level. So what could we do to help, help that?
So the thing is, JP, so this is about resource allocation, right? So staffing needs, you know, you looked at a report from the budget tonight. And so when we get to those staffing decisions and we start talking about, you know, last year, obviously, we weren't in a position to do it, but when we allocate out staff for things or we talk about things that we want to bring back or if we would bring you cuts to start new things, I mean, that's the conversation I think we have to have from a global perspective. Because it's not just the John decision. That's where he gets stuff. These are the conversations we have where they would like to do things differently, but we're on a fixed budget and so unless they're gonna take something away to start something new, you know, we can't just give new. And so then, then we're in that holding pattern piece. And so I think that's where we have to go back to the Envision Mission Portrait of Graduate Conference of Equity Plan and say, if these are the things we're committed to, then we're gonna have to start making some tough budgetary decisions and maybe stop some of the things that we've been putting resources towards.
Well, that's, I think, that's kind of what I'm asking. What are we willing to stop? And I, and I think, I think we'd get a lot of support from the board to, I mean, if we're going into Patel, we're gonna have a broad conversation and that has led in other districts to major structural change. Some of this change is gonna rip right the folks of privilege. And I, and that's, I think, where we have a board that's ready to take that on, right? And but I think the question is, what do we stop? Because we, we will have to stop something because we're not getting more resources, not enough. And so that, I think that's the hard question of what are we willing, as a community and as individual schools, maybe to stop? And, and, you know, because my frustration's been over the years that we, we live in a culture where everybody's gotta have the same stuff. And I don't think, I think our schools are, are different and diverse within themselves and I don't know that we all need the same everything, right? There, there are gonna be differences and because that's always where the argument, well, we need money because they have this and we need that. And, and, and that's, you know, that's kind of a common refrain that, that we're candidates here and that board members here. And that those are very strong, powerful voices that, and I'm not saying it's coming from schools, right? You all have people talking to you as well.
Because it won't just be privilege, it'll be programs too that advocate for themselves, right? So if you just think about how we went through that budget cut scenario and a lot of the things we talked about, you know, then there'd usually be an advocacy group that'd show up at the next meeting, right, saying, don't do that, right? Well, there's always gonna be a don't do that, a don't do that. And so when we have the plan to come back to, to say, we are doing this and we know we have to make a decision somewhere, I think that more firmly positions us than to be able to do that. But I think what we have to come back to you guys with is then a, okay, if we're gonna report out a goal of the Conference of Equity Plan and we want to say, hey, this is what we'd like to do, here's our proposal, you know, that's where I think the board and admin team work together to say, okay, are we on the same page? Are we locked up with this, you know, as we move into that either staffing season or you know, a new plan that's gonna get rolled out for learning for staff, for staff development and something in that regard. So that's where I would see that conversation happening because these guys, you know, I, I think John details it well, right? I mean, that's a goal, that's an area. They want to move on. They want to be able to do something. We need to create the flexibility and space for them to be able to do that.
Yeah. Can I jump in just on that topic? I have a whole lot of thoughts about stick to that one. I appreciate that too, that you said that because I think a lot of the times we're like, you know, our extracurriculars aren't representative of our student body. So how do we get more kids to do the stuff we're already doing? It's kind of the focus we've been in, but I know, was it when we had education committee about Avid? The young lady that was there talked about how she wanted to go into music and I believe Paul asked the question, well, are you doing anything at school right now? And she's like, no, or did, and I think she was graduating. And he's like, why not? Is it because, you know, you didn't enjoy the types of music things that were available? And that was the answer, right? And then shortly after that, we were in Des Moines, IASB, and my old alma mater comes out with a gospel choir that was fantastic. I guarantee you that was not a thing when I was there. And I was like, how do we make that kind of stuff happen to give a different opportunity? And so I really appreciate that thought. That was nice.
JP was talking about similar and I would say, instead of saying maybe similar, we're gonna do a version of Hear My Voice, but we're gonna do it on the instrumentation side of things. And so that'll be electronic music, some beat music and some not European classical music, right? And so we'll do that on the instrumentation side and we're already starting to recruit kids much like we would for our EOS, for our AP initiative and trying to get more kids into our music program so that they don't look so traditional. It's not the exact same as what John's doing, but it's, it's similar. Yeah.
I guess I, my question is, because John, your comment, like for every one kid, there's fifty kids, right? And, and you know your building best, but what we see is our culture and climate data, right, that paints a very different story than that, right? So I guess, and that's district-wide, but I guess I want to know how you guys are using that data because we've got the three-year trend now. It, it hasn't changed. And frankly, if you compare that to our academic data, that hasn't changed since we've been keeping data, right? Our performance gaps have not changed. It's the same. It's up and down. And I, you know, so that's a correlation. I don't, I don't know, right? I know we haven't figured out the answer on the academic side. We have not figured out how to make sure all of our African-American kids learn math the same as our white kids, regardless of poverty, right? We, our data shows even African-Americans who are not in poverty learn at lower rates than our white kids across almost every subject area. And so nothing we've done has touched that in the thirty years or so we've been tracking that data. Well, now we have Culture and Climate Survey that says, well, our students are telling us. I mean, I guess I find it pretty horrifying, you know, a third of your kids are saying, I hear racist comments from teachers and students. I don't feel accepted in my hallway. LGBTQ students as well, right? The data's also, so how do you use that to, to inform what you're doing in the building to help? So that at the board, when we see the numbers, we're like, wow, there's movement here.
Oh, yeah, two examples and these are anecdotes. It's not, it's not systemic. I don't have a grand answer, but two examples. Like, so at our last faculty meeting, two meetings ago, we took the data from first trimester and we looked at kids that failed more than one class. And we just, we just said, every single one of these kids, we've got to move them off this list. So our staff, individually, we invited, encouraged, challenged, not required, but challenged staff members to consider one-on-one mentoring for a student that's on that list with the express goal of being, I'm not gonna be on that list second trimester. And so we, we had some money that had been donated by, available, so we made some funds available to teachers if they wanted to set up like an incentive plan with a student. And so I have a little guy, he's a freshman. He failed two classes first try and I pulled him in and talked to them. I just said, look, I don't, I'm gonna meet with you every Friday and I'm gonna, I'm gonna check in on your grades. We're gonna sit in here, we're gonna pull up Power School, we're gonna check this out every Friday. And we were very clear, the goal is we're not gonna fail a single class this trimester. We're gonna pass every one of them. And I said, look, I'd like to provide you with a reward if you accomplish that goal. And I said, what do you want to work for? And he wanted naturally, he wanted a City High sweatshirt. That's what he wants to work for, which is really cool. And so, you know, we're working on that. So just kind of one kid, it's, it's an anecdote, but that's an example of a lot of kids that are on that list. There's a correlation there between, and, and we're, we're trying to move as many of those kids forward by building those relationships and providing that special attention and caring. That's just one example. We need to do a whole lot more things like that, I think.
I think from the system level, not to keep cutting these guys off, they can jump in or interrupt me anytime they want to too, but I think the thing to remember is this, you're right, this is a long-term problem, right? But there's some things that have only been done here on the short term. And so I have great confidence in some of the things we're doing that we're able to start breaking down. John's example, the F thing. You know, we're able to get some real-time data to them about how many students they have with failing grades and on the whole, chronic absenteeism is another thing we looked at. You heard Greg talk about students gotta be in front of the instruction to learn the instruction. So addressing some things like absences and failing grades is the best way for us to ever attack some of those summative results we see, right? I mean, we have to use the data we have to start to lean in on some of those things. But when we talk about historically, you know, students achieving it, those very disparate rates, when I got to the districts or when we did our first presentation, I think Amy and I, was one of the first times we disaggregated the data and even look at the conversation. So in the relative history of being able to do that, that's pretty short, right? And then we think about all the things we created urgency around to do, we have to start seeing the results of those things happen, of course. But now we have attention and urgency attached to those problems, right? And so then we're dealing with the scope of a problem that's a nationwide issue. And so I'm not saying all those things to say excuses, but I think it's, it's to measure what have we done and where do we need to go next. And so I think we put a lot of things into place and then it's to start to look at those little indicators of success and start to move those big ones. And so if we can get movement on failing grades, if we can get movement on absences, if we can get movement on climate, culture, survey data, that'll lead us to, to have a pretty good estimate and prediction that will get movement on summative assessment data, right? And all the work we're doing on the curriculum instruction side. So I just, I think that's an important frame of reference for us to remember because I think that's hard for our community to understand. Well, this has been going on a long time. It is, right? But we weren't even having the courage to talk about it here until about five and seven years ago.
And we're spending a lot more time collectively between the three schools collaborating. So the, the second PD of each month on the administrative side, we're starting to share, share practices around what each of us do and I think that's better for all of us, you know, collective learning. Scott certainly doesn't have all the answers all by himself.
I just want to say too, as many of you know, I worked on the Equity Committee for the last several years. So I've had a long run of yelling at you. And I've gotta stop doing it.
I think I've yelled at you once, Charlie.
I, well, I did the best I could.
Equity meetings never record.
And I definitely want us, want me and hopefully all of us to become much more collaborative, deliberate, thoughtful and committed and dedicated to what we're trying to do to that just, just to expand it. Just delighted, you know, that all three of you are doing things that you want to do in your school that you think are important and wrong. John, if you need four board votes to do what you want to do with fine arts, you have at least one of them. I'm really intrigued about using fine arts as a way of making, making school a much more attractive thing for kids to different, different cultures and different backgrounds. I just talked to a staff member of one of the schools, you know, in the last few weeks who really wants to do much more, wants to use that staff member's background and connections to offer what he described as hip-hop music, you know, for our kids. I mean, that'd be great. Our kids grew up playing choral and musical stuff, you know, they still do that and stuff like that. But that's not for, a lot of kids could do music, really great music. really great music.
I really, I feel like it's always, well, not always, sometimes it's like this us versus them thing. And I really wanted this conversation to illustrate that we all have to be pointing in the same direction and realizing that we're all part of the solution if we're going to make any headway. And, you know, hearing all three of you talk about things that you're doing and recognizing just in general that there is a problem is, it makes me happy that that is common, right? Because I think if we fall into the making excuses as to why things are, right, it can be an excuse that, well, this is a nationwide problem. So what are we going to do about it? Like, we're not going to make any headway at all. And I couldn't care less what's happening in the rest of the nation right now. We've got kids right here that we're not meeting the needs of and we've got to figure it out. And so having us all pointing in the same direction, hearing all the things that you're doing, I think is great. And I wanted to comment a little bit on the program that Greg was talking about because my head, I'm going to sound like a broken record because I say this all the time, is I start to look at everything through this MTSS type of lens and thinking of how you're putting kids together, like high achieving and sort of the middle of the road and lower achieving and putting them together to try and increase all of them, right? That's a, that's that bottom layer, right? That's good for all of them to all try and improve. And I think that's a, a really nice step to help those kids. I think that's great. And I know that Scott can talk about or not talk about, but he and I had talked privately and I know he's looking at the, the data, I don't know if it's daily or weekly or whatever, looking at the kids' grades, right, saying, all right, we got kids out there failing grade, you know, with failing grades. And, you know, what are we doing to try and oversee that? And I guess John talked about that a little bit too. So I know that you guys are doing stuff and just because my kids are at Liberty, I hear more from Scott. So I appreciate being able to hear from John and Greg there to kind of hear what they're doing.
I think that's one thing we've tried to flip our administrator meetings. And it's not perfect yet, but one of the two meetings a month, you know, they have an opportunity to come in. We've tried to do some more professional learning. The second half of the year, we're going to try to focus more on sharing, like what we'll have next week. We'll really be focused on what are the strategies you're doing. So we'll have an opportunity to talk to each other about that, John, I think, like you said. And then, like you said, there's a system conversation, there's a building conversation, right? I mean, what are the access things? You know, eventually we're going to have a conversation about math, you know, with access to even core, like you said, from an MTSS perspective. And then there's the building level interventions, you know, around some of that stuff. Because that, there's so many things at play that are leading into that, you know, achievement gap or access gap, whatever you want to say. So the thing I'll just be honest about, the culture piece that we're still trying to work on together that we've talked about is, you know, when I talk to these guys, it is still hard to feel like we're not getting in trouble, right, when they're called to the board meetings. So thank you for clarifying that and saying that aloud too, that you want to have a collaborative conversation and learning about that. Because I do still think that's an element that's still in the room sometimes is that, okay, principals are coming to the board meeting, they must be in trouble for something, right? Or something like that. And none of them are going to tell you that, but I'm going to say that because I just think that's the undercurrent sometimes that we have. And so I think that's important for us to work on if we're going to talk about, okay, what are potential solutions? What would work? What wouldn't work? Where do we need to get better? You know, we just have to take some steps to continue to do that because that's not necessarily been historically how that's looked.
I think that's fair because it's not your fault, any of you three, as to the way our world is. But it is your responsibility to make your part of it better in whatever ways you can. And it's our responsibility to make sure you guys have the resources to do that, right? And that's a very different thing. And that's why we're sitting around at a work session and just kind of talking about it and hearing those things. Because it's very easy to sit back and say, and hear the stories of these terrible things are happening. Or just looking at the, the climate data or the, you know, the proficiency data, that type of stuff, right? It just looks very negative. And it's very easy to say, what are you guys doing wrong? And it's a whole, it's a better thing for us to say, okay, what are we doing right? And how can we do more of that? And how can we, you know, just grow that?
And not to make excuses, but this is a national pernicious, terrible problem. And so it's, it's to suggest, this is one of the hardest things that we do in our society is to address these racial societal, which manifest in our public schools. And so this isn't not, we're, we're not calling you to the principal's office to talk about these things. It's to demonstrate our support and acknowledgement that, I mean, you know all your students' names. And you know all of their stories. And you're working every day to try to address them. And it's hard. And so it's, this is more of a thank you for what you do every day. What can we do as a board to support you to help provide the direction, the prioritization, the resources as we make choices, right? But this is, this is hard stuff. It's societal stuff. It's systemic stuff. And it's not any one of us, it's all of us supporting each other, shoring each other up and recognizing that this doesn't change overnight. This is generations of work that we're trying to change. And culture doesn't change overnight. This is hard stuff. And so, I mean, I feel like we have to acknowledge that and support each other as all of us too, because it's hard. And hard things will happen as a group as a team. We're going to have to work those, do those together. So thank you. You know all the students' names. We hear the onesie-twosie stories that are really tough. And people come to us and talk about them. But you know all of the stories in your schools. And thank you for, for addressing each of them.
If I could just, I have a, for those out there, I do not know my students' names.
But you know their stories.
I'm not exactly, I was always just going to say, I was, I'm not a name remember. It's I, is it, I thought, and I have a different, a system for learning names that I can't use as a principal. But I do know their stories. So I just have to say, remind me that kid's name. Then I, and I, oh yeah, and then I got the story. And that's good. But I just, sometimes it's useful to do that, what would you do if you had the magic wand or whatever kind of thing. I'm just going to throw a couple of examples, you know, because we have a dance team. It's very successful. And it has, it comes from a very particular place, right? And we've tried some other things to get, to diversify that group, for example. But it's not, you know, by its nature, it's very restricted to people who've gone through this technical training of dance, right? And so then we might try a separate hip-hop dance club or something to the side. And what we don't have is some structure of a dynamic individual who is vested in hip-hop dance or has a history of it or is, you know, excited about pursuing it. And it goes for a little while and then it does, and it dies out. We try that maybe drumming, for example, you know, sort of rhythmic kinds of things. And what we need is somehow to get a sustained effort with adults and resources from our community who are people doing that. So yes, I would love to have a step club tomorrow, you know? And I think that if the proper person were there recruiting it, you know, I would be amazing, you know? But when we reach out, we have, we don't have the resources. We haven't been able to tap in to the proper resource to do something like that. My daughter did step in college. And I thought, well, I, I need somebody that could know his step. I mean, I, but I don't, I haven't been able to harness a person. I can regularly have in my building that, you know, will start something as dynamic and cool as that, you know, that experience would be. And every once in a while, we get that. We get university, awesome university resources. There are these great kids coming in, getting his PhD or masters in something. And they really want to help and give back to their community. They do that. They start something. And then they move because they get a job somewhere else. And then we don't have a way to continue, right? So, you know, there's just like that, like John was talking about in the arts or whatever. But if I waved a magic wand, I could have, you know, programs that I could just target the students. Because when I do get a quality program, a quality person, you know, I get all students getting in there. And there's a tendency for students with curvillage, they, they take up all the air in the room, you know? It just, I've seen it happen. And so then that becomes the step club for like my daughter in college, you know, rather than a great cultural experience that could not as good as it can be. So those are the kinds of things I keep thinking. If I could have, you know, this, you know, a coach for this or that that was skilled in this area, it would be, I, we could utilize, we could harness this kind of things. We're not able, I failed time and time again in doing this. And it's a same thing.
That leads straight into my passion and belief. We've talked about this. It's got to happen. It's got to happen. And that's the Grow Your Own program for teachers, for people. I know where we're going to find them. We're going to find them right here in the halls of City High. We've got the best kids. But like, there's no excuse.
I mean, come on.
This has got to happen. We live in a university town. We, it is time, folks. I don't know how to do it. We need to make this happen. We need to, we need to be able to have the University of Iowa, Kirkwood Community College come to the table with us and say, we're going to, we are, man, come on, they can do this for our, for their local Iowa City town that supports the university in so many ways. We need to create a number of scholarships that are available. The kids can live at home. That's the greatest function of Iowa City. We don't have to pay for the whole thing in the dorm. We can live at home. But we got to cover the tuition, get kids into college. And then it's just real simple. They're going to have a service period back to the school district. I don't, I don't know all the finer points, but if we could do something like that, we could grow our own minority staff members. And it would be such a beautiful.
So I think here's where we start. Because we've asked Chase and some pilots to come back with a very specific target. So we can start right away. But, I mean, I don't think we're going to start with kids right away. So I'm asking you guys to identify your paras. And we can come up with a forgivable loan program so they can get their certification. And who are those folks? Because your para isn't going to stick around at what we pay paras for very long. Not if he has a family. Not if he wants to move on with his career. So those are the folks, and that's what I'm hearing from principals across the district. I have five people right now. If we have this program.
And I would say do both because like, I'm all for the para thing, 100%. I am. But just interacting with some of our folks, I, I just think life gets really busy. That's not an excuse. We can certainly find some great people that are going to take advantage of that. But like my guy, he's got little kids at home.
So I'm, so, so what I'm saying is, I think if we're going to start that now, we're going to start with five people across the district. Because we're not going to come up with money to pay four years of a kid's tuition. But we might be able to tap into some forgivable loan. And you promised us five years. And we'll, and that's forgivable, right? So I, because I think the university already has structures in place, right, for non-traditional teacher track. You know, people taking classes at night. So, because I agree, I think we need a robust ones, right? But I also, I'm not going to wait for that to get in place.
I would just hope that the university would meet us halfway and recognize that we don't even need access to their residential dorms. You know, we're right here. We just need tuition. We just need to let the kids in. I hope, I wish we could get that.
But you know, John, they're struggling with money from the state, same as we are, right? And, and you know how many minority students they have in their teacher programs?
But that's what, like, we can provide it with the students.
And I think they want it, right? So I, so here's, I think our opportunity is this Patel project, right? We're going to look at a graduate and the potential is for you guys to get every, this is the magic wand. This could be, you've got a board that's willing to change the structure, right? We don't need maybe a 55-minute bell schedule where you whiplash between subjects all the time, right? We, because businesses are telling us, you're not prepping kids for the real world. That's what we need you to do. We need, so we're involving businesses, you guys, community members, the board. And, because I, you know, I think without a Grow Your Own or without more recruitment and retention, Culture and Climate is going to be very hard to tip the balance over to what we need it to be. But I, because I don't want to, you know, get rid of good for, because we don't have a perfect, right? And I, I think the urgency is now, if we had five more minority teachers, administrators, we're going to, that's the beginning of tipping that culture to get it where we need it to be. So, because the university's part, they're footing the bill, right, for this, for this Patel service. So it may be an opportunity to make things. And then that's part of the conversation is how do we do this for all of our kids?
Chase has that work well underway. And he's considering both our students, paras, teachers, and our admins. And he's got that in draft form right now. I don't want to burst his bubble, but that's.
I'll be mad at us if we spoil it. But I think, the thing you said, GP too, as part of this is we have to continue to look at this as a community conversation, I think, right? That, you know, yes, we're the ones that serve the kids. But at the same time, there, there are kids in the Iowa City community greater, right? And so when we, when we hear those criticisms from the community, there needs to be some shared responsibility around some of those pieces, like you said, about university coming to the table with some of that. And not to throw them under the bus, they're just the example we're talking about right now. But, you know, if we want a step team, then how do we, you know, who in the community can step up and help us find somebody? You know, because otherwise, what's going to happen is that that spot or that activity position is going to give, give it to an assistant boys soccer coach, you know, something like that. Because there's a need there too. You know, privilege will push for that. We'll get an assistant soccer coach. And then we won't have the dollars they could do the, the step team we could do. And so some of that, we need to figure out what are the channels we, we address to try to get some help for some of these things too. That it's not just, we always own the, the problem that's in front of us. I think that's a, that's a big component of it. Quiet, Paul. You're making me nervous tonight.
Speaking of soccer, when you say soccer, and I'll share that anecdote, like, we did create JV boys soccer at City when we got the ELL program. And our ELL program is, we have 180 kids now. We went from a no ELL program to the biggest in the district, one of the biggest in the state, 180 ELL kids at City High. And we, well, so in conjunction with bringing ELL to City, we, we helped create JV soccer, which didn't used to exist. And so now we have a whole other team full of guys. And they're, it's a high percentage, you know, African kids.
That probably wasn't the best example.
But I mean, I just feel like that's an example of how, when we are able to add the right kind of activities that are high interest in demand, we can get more kids involved in positive school activities. So that's the reason I share that.
So how do you want to continue the conversation with these guys? Because, you know, Tuesday nights usually for their activity nights, their voice is important, you know, in how we consider this. And so.
We're waiting on right now. Simply because I, here you go.
You're not doing a team.
You're the bad luck guy.
Don't worry, John, I lost weight one night.
So how would be best to continue to see some of their input or the conversation we're having? Because I think they're, they're conversations we have on the side, some of them more so than others. You know, some of your questions are good to prompt, but I guess what would you like to continue to see? Because I don't think it does seem any good to have one off, right? And then do nothing with it or ever come back to it. We're going to update you with the Equity Plan. We do our administrator meetings around MTSS. But that would be maybe the takeaway question I would just ask you before you wrap up. And it would be, what do you want to see us continue to bring back?
I don't have a good answer for that. My head was, let's all participate amazingly well in the portrait of the graduate and identify the things that we want this district to be and figure out how to, and make sure that we vet the secondary principals' input and that. So that's the point. Is to engage in that thoughtfully and bringing those experiences to the table.
One of the things that I think that we need to do is, and I appreciate that you all feel like you've been called to the principal's office. It's troubling to me that we just have the three of you here. Because you don't get these kids as first years in like a bubble, right? They went through an elementary program that has culture and climate issues. They went through a junior high program that has culture and climate issues. And then they come to your school. And if we're going to target this problem and really solve it, you guys are a huge part of it. But we should have the elementary principals in here. We need to have the junior high principals. I mean, it, it's not just on the three of you to need to solve the problem. That's not a realistic situation. When we're talking about activities and we want to have step class and we've got too many, you know, band and orchestra are too affluent and white-heavy, what, what options are there for elementary school students? Band and orchestra. So of course, if you have a kid starting with fourth grade band and orchestra, that's what they're going to be, have opportunities to do at high school. But we have to talk about this whole conversation at all grade levels in, in order, I think, to really move the needle along. And so we have to continue the dialogue. But I, I think it has to be with broader stakeholders.
I'm reaching my, my energy around the portrait of the graduate, because I would like to view it community-wide, all levels in our schools, post-secondary, center business, community, parents.
I think there'd be interesting link there between the portrait and then what we've done with the diversity Equity inclusion plan, right?
Yeah, I agree.
Something is going to come to the top from the portrait that's going to directly link us to our Equity Plan, right? And that work there will feed that arm of the portrait.
I was going to lean towards that part of it, the diversity Equity Plan, just that, you know, as we're getting updates and, you know, we sort of talked about kind of prioritizing some of those goals because we couldn't throw them all out. because we couldn't throw them all out there and try and hit them all. Whereas we get updates as to how we're trying to meet each one of those goals, right? Some are along lines, either at our high school level or at our other levels. They're doing stuff in the schools to try and help feed those goals, so we can get that update as we're going along that way.
I agree with you, so we gotta work, I think it's work.
Yeah, I think the main thing for me is, yeah, we don't.
But I, but I, I'm not saying that I'm not gonna vote for.
You've gotta vote.
You know he's gonna send you an email when he leaves, asking his position, right?
That we're collaborating, you know, that we're all rowing in the same direction, that, that we all have these goals. I mean, that's the frustrating part for us, is we're not there, we don't, you know, we set these policies, we hear from some community members, and then you guys are doing, and all of our folks are doing everything in between. And we don't, we're not there, right? We can't personally have a job, I can't be there, right? Like, I can't go to the food service thing, right? So just, I think that's the, the hard part for us, is we don't, we know the policy, and then we know what we hear, but we don't really know what goes on in between. And so, so sometimes it feels like we're being called in the principal's, because that's, we've heard this thing. And we can't tell our community, trust us, it's, it's happening, we know it's happening, because I, because we aren't living it. And so that's the part, I hope we can go in that spirit, what we're collaborating, and we know, and we have confidence that we're all rowing in the same direction. Because when you mentioned implicit bias training, I don't think we got a lot of good feedback on that. You know, I don't think we heard a lot of, I think we, you know, not that it wasn't a noble effort, but that the implementation was either not very well received, or because we're a PD model, we couldn't really deliver it in, in an effective way, and that, and I've been in a teacher in PD where it's like, you know, you don't really wanna be there, right? You're not really invested as a staff. And so, and so then when you hear those things, like, well, we tried this thing, and it, it really didn't work, or it didn't have the effect we wanted, I think then we, then we don't know, but what else do we do? You know, so that's the part for us, we just need from you, like, like, here's how it's working, pretty frank and honest assessments of like, you know, here's why the culture is what it is, you know? I, that's, I think what we need is, is frank, honest assessments of like, here's the problem, here's what we're doing about it, and here's kind of the gaps, where we don't know what to do, or we want some guidance, or we think you guys are like, this, this maybe wasn't as helpful as you intended it to be. I know that would be helpful for me to know, if the things we're doing, because we've got the comprehensive equity book and plan, the CD, but how do we know that it's gonna work when the data's not changing? Because that's the other thing we see, is the data. When it doesn't move, then we don't. Because we don't have the anecdotal stories, we don't have those experiences to, to maybe bolster our spirits and say, oh, there are some, some good things happening.
And I think you are gonna start to see some data from us now on over promise and under deliver of things that are working, right? I mean, I, I think that's what we hope to show you. And so that's why I break it down to grades, absences, you know, some of the building level, you know, dismland data that we've seen movement on, you know, I think those are all positive things we can show that are starting to do some things, but then they, how do we connect it, that's some of the impact. So I think you're right, I mean, there's a lot of pieces, a lot of layers to it that we need to account for, but continuing to have the conversations that Corin does, too.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Okay, we've got one more topic, folks, and it's what we're doing to do this, because we're a trace. There's a couple of things to share, and then whatever directors are gonna discuss on the topic. But in terms of the culture and climate review process, we are in discussions right now in terms of finding a impartial third party to do the, this school investigation. We're not, we're not looking to use the team here in, in our district or our only legal council, we're looking for a third party to come in, impartial, independent, to, who has experience in these kinds of school climate reviews to, to do that work. So there's a search going on to find different candidates in that regard, and, and so that's, that's something we can report that's underway. I mean, that, we had the direct request to have someone outside of our district come in to do that review, and we're trying to find candidates to do that.
So who's doing that search? I mean, because this... So the process had been initiated, a team went into Lucas, but now the team is pulling out of Lucas, and we're going with an independent review. So how, I mean, when was that determined? How is that search internal? And right now, people are under the impression that it's internal because of.
The communication that happened, right? So my, I think we need to go back out to the school community and give an update of where we are in this process, because there has been a communication. And, and I think we need to say, we, because I think there's been feedback from that initial process, there needs to be some anonymity, there needs to be a, a impartial, independent review. Is, is some of the feedback that I.
Yeah, I mean, some of the feedback that I received directly from staff, the concern is that what was just painted, that us versus them, and the way the communication read, it was, the, people felt it's though the board sees a problem, so we're coming in to fix it, and not, uh, we see an issue, we want to fix it. Because, I mean, that was one communication that we didn't see at the board. And usually we see every single communication that goes to our schools. So I don't know if that's true or not, how it was worded, but, I mean, my biggest concern is now we have people thinking we're forcing our admins that we, we've been very collaborative with in saying, this is an issue, or something's not right because of people coming to the mic. And I don't know how to fix that, without making it seem like now we're forcing, or the board is demanding us to fix this. I mean, does that make sense?
We have to find, we have to try to find a way to continue moving forward, because there's been communication with the entire school population, and the feedback that we're receiving is that the board's on witch hunt, and it was not a collaborative effort, and so, and that we need anonymity, and a more objective review, and I, we have to begin to try to correct that. So I do think that we need to get out back in front of the school population and give an update on what we're doing and why, that this is a collaborative effort from, with the board and the administrative team, that we're all understanding that we need to be work here, we need to get some information and some facts, so that we can address the situation. And, and we need to go back and try to reconfirm with the messaging, and I think there probably should be some board members in this next discussion with the school, so that we can show that we're with the admin team, and we're all doing this together, and give an update. Because I don't think we can wait either to get someone in place to begin the process. I mean, I think we need to get back out and start this communication, kind of repair process.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it's been a, a week now, I think, since the admin team was out there, and Chase stepping away, and I'll be helping with that more.
Here's, here's what I'll say, though, this is what was reported out at Black Voices last night, and Charlie, please correct me if I get anything wrong, because this is the first that I've heard that we're gonna pull away from the internal model and find an external investigator. And I, I don't actually think that that's necessarily a bad idea. But I sat next to Laura Gray last night, and she thought she was part of the internal team going in. So this is not being communicated to the team. She told me Jeremy was on the team, and the two other people are on the team. So it seems like it's a mess. What was reported at Black Voices is that pushback from the community is from the two PTO parents, the co-presidents, who are white, and they're pushing this witch hunt narrative in an attempt to get any type of scrutiny off Lucas, to get, to, to get everyone to go away, and to not have any actual change happening. And so I don't know who's, who's saying we're on a witch hunt, but if, if it's the people who are causing the problem, we need to be highly skeptical of, of their pushback.
The process is gonna make people uncomfortable.
And it, and it shows.
This should be uncomfortable.
So I can't speak to what's been communicated internally with the administrative team or not. I just wanna, we had a conversation last Thursday with Steve and Chase and Nick, I think, to talk about the feedback from the initial review, Joe and Crystal were there, and to talk about the need to find an, an independent review process. And so again, I can't speak to.
Yeah, I don't think we've put the brakes on, you know, the folks we had talked to inside, because I think we were still trying to evaluate, you know, which direction was going, and, you know, I'm probably at least knowledgeable person to talk about this. But the thing I would say, Reteen, I appreciate sharing that perspective, right, is we try to work on some of these things, because we don't wanna feel in that way either. And I think the important thing that, for us to think about, you know, I guess when we communicate to people is, we haven't advised you that this is a bad idea either, right? I mean, I think that's important, probably say out loud, is that, hey, we haven't stopped and said, hey, we think this is wrong approach, or this is all we should be doing, so.
And, and I know that because I'm in communication with you guys. But when communication, and this is what I was actually told that it said, the board has directed superintendent to do X. And again, I wasn't in a room, but what was reported by several staff in a room was that the tone was, yeah, we're here because we're being made to do it. I'm, I'm highly skeptical that our admin would go, our administration team would go in and say things like that, but that's what was, is reported out, and that's the field in a room, and it's like, yeah, the board wants this, have no clue what they're gonna do with it, don't even know what they want, but we're here. So.
Can I speak to that a little bit? Because if you just look at the nuts and bolts of it, the board directed the superintendent to do it.
Absolutely.
We did do that. The thing is, it was already brought to light that there was an issue that we needed to kinda look into, because there was just a lot of anecdotal stories coming out from parents and staff members, and just a history of administrators leaving the school. And administration was very well aware of it, and wanted some direction on how to move forward with it. And so our direction was, well, let's do this review to kinda get down to it. And I will say, I'm not gonna give the whole conversation that we had with our legal team, but Joe asked the most important question, what is your goal? All right, to, when you're going in there. And what we tried to, well, what I tried to articulate is that we hear these big stories like, the climate culture there is bad, and it's causing all the administrators to leave. Those are very broad strokes kind of things that we get, without having any substance there. So what I would want to get out of it as a board member is to find out what particular behaviors are being exhibited that we can address and say, okay, those types of behaviors are not going to be acceptable, right? And how are we going to ensure that those types of behaviors don't happen anymore? It doesn't, somebody asked me, are we going to be naming names, right? Like, who is exhibiting those behaviors? If people name names as part of this process, they do that, but in the end, I think it's up to us to define just the types of behaviors that we will or will not accept in our schools. And that's true at Lucas or anywhere else. And I think this will just kinda take it from that big amorphous, things are bad, to these are the things that are happening there. And it doesn't really matter who's doing it necessarily, if we can then illustrate the plan as to, all right, these are behaviors that are no longer allowed. So how we're going to make sure those behaviors don't happen anymore, right? That's kind of what I'd be looking for as a board member, but that's me. And, you know, you all have whatever you wanna get out of the process, too, but I, I, I wanted to be very clear that it wasn't the board found a problem that administration was turning a blind eye to. It was not like that, right? We're.
Right, I get that, but what, I don't think you're hearing what I'm saying. That's exactly what people were saying, and I don't want that impression to be out there. That's what I was getting at.
We need to try to correct that.
Yes, that's what, that's all.
We need to get back into the school population and have a follow-up. And reiterate, this is a joint discussion, we know there's an issue, we have to address it, there's a sense of urgency, we need, we believe we need help to do this, with some external third parties who've got experience in this space, and so we're looking for people who can do that. And, and, I mean, we just need to, some, something needs to change, and for us to figure out what needs to change, we need to have more facts, we need to understand more of the behaviors that Sean was talking about, right? I mean, we need to understand more what's happening.
And I also think we just need to be very clear that when we're having these conversations, which are difficult conversations, the message is always, because we do get set policy, and, and that's the policy of the school district. And then the truth should be, if you don't believe in that policy, you should not work in this school district. I mean, that has got to be, we are all rowing in this boat together, and if, it's like, what was the principal, um, nobody was there, the principal in Cedar Rapids, who has turned, assistant principal, made his school all restorative, right? He's just gone to that model. And the question was, Annie, you remember, what was the turnover of your staff? Very high, because the message was, if you're not gonna operate in this system, I'll find a better place for you that works for what you wanna do. Like, I've been doing it the same way for twenty years, then you can go. And then for him, it was, okay, I'll find another building for you. And I think what we're saying as a district, as far as culture and climate goes, we're not gonna find another building for you, if you're not on board and believe that systemic racism is a problem, there's evidence in our buildings. And if we're not urgently and actively trying to fix it, we're a part of the problem. And so nobody says, I don't see color. Well, this isn't gonna be a good district if you don't see color, because if I'm black, I don't get that privilege, right? And so I, I just think that, because we have these conversations as the people who were elected to do this, and we, you all, we all work really hard at this volunteer position, we put a lot of hours in. And we feel, because we hear the stories, when I have a parent tell me, I had, my son had to leave the district because the, his mental health is affected by constant microaggressions and constant, it's like, I can't look that person in the eye and say, we're gonna do, you know, we have to act urgent. It is a long problem, but we've said that forever, although I think you're right, man, we haven't always admitted it. Iowa City for a long time has been like, well, it's not us, you know, we don't have that problem here, we're not racist, we're really progressive. And I wanna dispel that myth, and I wanna put it to bed, and I, I really wanna send the message that if you're not on that page, please, go take your talents somewhere else, because we won't have it. We're not gonna change the culture if we have people rolling their eyes at implicit bias training and say, this doesn't apply to me, that, you know, and there's no, you know, we can have all the PD we want, but if they don't believe it in their gut, we aren't gonna go anywhere if we have any, anyone who works in the sixth street who doesn't have a growth mindset. Well, if you don't have a growth mindset, this is not the place for you to work. I, you know, and I don't, I, I just think it has to be that strong, and we have to be unified. So nobody says, because what that does, now it's an us versus them. Now it's the board versus admin, now it's city versus west, now it's liberty versus everybody. Like, I don't, we're done with us versus them, we have to get on the same page and say, and that's gonna help our community come along, I believe, for us to be bold, strong on our message, and not, well, you know, those, those subtle things. So I just, I wanna, I, I, you know, I wanna be collaborative, but I also wanna feel the urgency of those kids that are going through our district, who don't, who have a very disparate experience. And, and, and if, if the numbers aren't gonna move, but if they see it, if these kids and families see us doing things, that will start to change everything. Because then they'll believe that we're working on it. I believe you're working on it, because now I've got a black principal in my building, and I can see the way they're doing things. And now my kid doesn't see their first teacher that looks like them, maybe they'll see that in high school. And, and I, and those things are gonna move the needle. And, and I, I just, so that, to me, is really hard to hear, that, well, we're setting up an us versus them.
I, I would thank you for reminding me that I said we should all be pointing in the right direction, because I sorta just threw Lucas off to the side, like, they've got a problem over there, and I wanna make that perfectly clear, that their problem is our problem. And I wanna speak to the fact that we have had people come up to the board table and remind us as a district how our record with administrators of color looks, and how it is, and the perceived lack of support for them. And I did ask Steve if I could say this on record, and I can. And I did ask Steve if I could say this on record, and I can. So it's the board and administration's expectation that when Dr. Jenkins is done with her requested leave, she will be back as principal at Lucas. And we will do what we need to do to support her in being successful there. And this is part of that, right? This is us stepping in, not to point fingers, but to find solutions to make things better. I think one of the suggested questions that we would ask staff in this process is, are you happy coming to work? Or what makes you happy coming to work? Or what makes you unhappy coming to work? Not what's wrong with your school, right? That's not a helpful question. And I think that's something, I think is a, something, maybe part of that message as we go back out there, that those are the kind of answers we're looking for. Because that was some of the feedback too, is we don't know what it is you're trying to ask of us or what answers you're trying to get. And I could see how that's very uncomfortable to be in that situation. Probably very similar to our principals coming in here tonight, not really knowing what's gonna be asked of them. So those are the kind of things that we want to find out, right? When you walk into their school, I want everybody, when they're coming into work, to be thinking, what do I need to do today? Not how am I gonna get through today, right? I think there's a lot of.
The thing I think about with culture, right? Culture is easy to identify and hard to change, right? I mean, that's the thing. And so, identifying these undercurrents will be rela, I don't think it'll be difficult, no matter if it's an internal or external team. I mean, you, like you said, four basic questions about, you know, what do you enjoy about being here? What's something you used to do, you wish you could do? I mean, you could script four questions pretty quickly and identify those undercurrents. Now, changing those things is back to DAP's point about that pressure support. You know, trying to find a happy medium there of how much pressure is needed to say, this is what we're about and this is who we're gonna be. And then how are we gonna support you to be that type of person? And then either you want to or you don't, right? Or you want, you don't want to or you can't, you know, in some of those scenarios. So I think that'll be the work on us as a group is trying to say, okay, now if we've identified, then what do we do to fix them, right? Because that's part of it.
That's gonna be the task.
I think Ruthie is telling us something that I want to try to do and reset the combined approach here to the Lucas staff. So they at least understand what we're doing. They will actually agree with you on what you're seeing.
I mean, I don't know, I've had a lot of thoughts as this conversation has progressed. I mean, my understanding that is that Dr. Jenkins is the third administrator of color who lives in Lucas. So.
Not Lucas.
Okay.
The district.
No, no, I thought it was a, I thought she was the third at the building.
No.
Okay.
So their unique scenario is several administrators in a short amount of time.
Right, at Lucas, they've had nine and, no, five in nine years.
Five in nine, and then Sean was speaking to the district.
Okay, so five in nine, I mean, I don't need a survey to tell me that that's a problem. That's just a problem. And so, we need this investigator to not say, is there a problem? We need to figure out what the problem is, what is going on. Because that is, we shouldn't have that turnover.
Agreed.
Period. But I think we need to act with some sense of urgency. We had four teachers of color at Black Voices last night and two administrators of color. And they all said the same thing, that they are not supported, that they are having difficulties, that they don't feel like admin has their back and that there's a serious culture problem. So I, we have a problem and we have to solve it. We can talk about grow your own as much as you want, but if they leave after three years, grow your own isn't gonna do any good to us. So I feel, to me, it's just, I hate talking, I just feel a sense of urgency behind this. I want to get this, I mean, if we're gonna go external, that's great, I support that. I think that there are people who are very qualified to do that, but let's do it and, and put a fire under them and say, we, I mean, I, we have to figure it out so that we can support Dr. Jenkins when she comes back. I would assume hopefully in the fall, if not summer.
When can we get back in front of Lucas's school?
We can arrange that at any time. I think that we need to know what our next steps are in a concrete way to get back to them and then share this message of a combined effort to improve things out there.
We recognize the sense of urgency. We know that this turnover is, is not good, it needs to change. We need to get some facts from the third parties or investigators to help us figure out those facts so that we can move this sense of urgency to make change, to make it better. That's, those are not good words, it's that gist of what we need to say.
When did you say you want people back out? Did you tell them?
And I wanted to know if we would find, because it could take a week. I mean, you know, to find someone that's good and qualified and, and so, I just don't, I don't want to wait. There's so much uneasiness and uncertainty and then, and just, you know, we need to get back out.
We're having a conversation tomorrow, right?
Yeah, I'm sure candidates, ideas.
So we may know more after that phone call.
Anyone knows people, Joe is pulling together kind of the review process. But I mean, there are names, candidates, I think just put it into the mix, you know, for consideration.
Are you looking at law firms or are you looking at other?
Both. So which of us, maybe it depends on when it's scheduled in terms of our availability to participate in that. But I do think we need to have more representation at the next meeting.
That's fine, I mean, we can do something as soon as we have some more concrete next steps. I mean, we can solidify that this week or early next week.
There's a meeting tomorrow, maybe we just try to get in that discussion tomorrow what the next steps are. I mean, for me, the next steps are hire a third party person who's got experience in these kinds of climate reviews. And that, so we can, I don't know the timeline, there's a sense of urgency. I would hope we can find that person in the next week to ten days. But I can't give specific dates because we're just starting the process. So that's something that we're doing and once we retain the person, we'll.
We could deliver the message.
While that search is happening, we go back.
That's what I'd like to be able to do is go out like this week and say, these are the things that we're doing.
What time's the meeting tomorrow?
Nine.
That's, there's not a Lucas.
No, this is about the start timing of that third party.
Wait, legal, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
But we could come back with some times to go to Lucas staff. Like you said, then however you guys want to make up representation.
Yeah, I mean, go out there three, ten, any day. I think I'm looking at Thursday, I think it's conference prep, but.
As long as, my only caveat, if it's Thursday, I can't go. But that before whoever walks in, there's a conversation between those walking in on, this is what.
This is the shared message.
Is, and hopefully there's agreement there. And if it's not, find some type of agreement for that shared message that again, people are comfortable in whatever message you're sharing and say that these are the next steps and this is where we're headed because we're trying to get at not only, I mean, it all ties back to the culture and climate because something has to be amiss.
There's a systemic issue.
Yes, so it's, it's a culture and climate and that's what we want to try and investigate and help solve.
Yeah, yes, there's a sense of urgency, there is impartiality, you know. Okay, so I want to make sure that we all travel together though and that. Can we, please?
Yeah.
Okay, my question is, when you go out, I appreciate everything that's being said. Do you, is it a listening post?
I think it's an update on what we shared last.
So you're gonna go, I'm just asking, and we'll not take any questions from the staff?
No, we'll, I'm sure we'd end up taking questions.
So it is a listening post?
Yeah, I guess.
I guess, because I mean, what I hear, listening posts is.
It's pretty wide open, right? I mean, about the issue. I think the purpose in going out would be to say, these are the concrete steps that are happening next. Do you have questions about those things? You know, today, we're not gonna get into questions about overall culture, overall principal responses to things. We're gonna keep it combined, do you have questions about this process?
And do we know the process with enough certainty this week to go out and?
I think that's what we need to say. We need to know concrete steps before we feel like we, if we don't have that tomorrow, then we can't say anything.
Yeah, that's what I would say, I get the need to go out and have that. I just would really caution you to.
Yeah, we can't go out if we don't have all the.
Yeah, this is.
But help me to level set though on the discussificity of the process that we need, that we should have in hand before we go out. Are we saying dates? Are we saying interview versus survey?
Oh, I think they're at that point, they want to know the X, Y's and Z's of it, I do. I just think you just need to know that. I mean, if you go out.
We will not know the process with the detail that is probably needed until we hire someone who has a methodology that, because they've done it before and have experience. And so, I don't think we should be making that up. I think that's why we're bringing in a third party who's done this, they've got expertise that we don't have.
Yeah.
And so, I'm concerned, because if we make this sequential, then we've just got more narrative and there and there and there within a gap that can take a life of its own. So that's why I'm wondering, is there anything we can do interim to just say, we're on it? We don't have all the X, Y, Z's. Admin and board are in this together.
Yeah.
We'll come back to you once we've got this person hired and give you the X, Y, Z's and the details.
We can give a communication and then say, hey, we're gonna follow up at this date and time, you know, once we think we have some more details, right? But there can still be a communication to repair some of what, you know, we kind of started the conversation with. And then let them know a time we will be out with more details surrounding it. You know, that would give us the time in between to figure out what that looks like.
So it's done face-to-face, this is another email?
That would just be a suggestion that we could do a communication that way, saying, here's an update. You know, we want to come out to you, but when we come out, we want to make sure we can share everything.
So this is another written communication?
That was just the idea.
We just want to look at it.
I would just generally say is, like, the one person in the room that was there was, if we're not able to answer some questions, it's not going to be a productive conversation. I think it's, an update is just being very transparent in regards to, this is, you know, we've heard some of your feedback, we've heard some of these things, we're looking at doing this piece for a third party. Communicate that directly, we will be in front of you once we're able to answer those specific questions. I just know from experience in questions that we had, even when we went out the other day, you know, I think if we are not able to answer those, it's just not gonna be.
There's no reason to be there.
It is not gonna be a helpful situation.
That's really good input from you all. So a written communication to give an update, these are the steps we're taking, we'll come back to you once we've got the detailed process about that.
Can we commit, can we commit to say, we hope that that will take place by March 1st?
I mean, that's. Take place by March 1st.
Coming back to them and communicate so that we can. Well, I mean, that's three weeks.
The next expectation.
But I would think if we could give them, yes, an actual, realistic date on our end.
Three weeks and we, why is there one, like tomorrow?
But, you know, under what, under promise over deliver?
I know, right, yeah.
I think we can even try to give them the date and time. I mean, if we, if we had a concrete action step and we knew who we were gonna go to, I mean, we could work with that person, say, hey, we gotta be back out in front of the staff by this date.
I just honestly don't know the people that are in that line of work and their kind of availability. So I hesitate to think that it's gonna be three weeks.
Well, maybe.
But that's why we talk more after tomorrow to.
Yeah, I think you kind of got three steps here, right? One is just that initial communication, hey, we've heard your feedback. This is what we're aiming for as a team and we're looking into the third party. And then at some point, we're gonna say, all right, we're, we've hired the third party or we selected them. And, you know, we could have a face-to-face conversation, here's what you should expect when they come to talk to you, whether it's gonna be one-on-one interviews or things like that. But then I think then there's another date that it's actually going to happen because if their availability is several weeks out, I think people need to know that too. Or they're constantly waiting for the shoe to drop that it's, somebody's marching in, right? And I don't want it to be that way, I want it to be, you know, maybe even we, whoever we hire as they kind of help us develop that plan is we have some sort of things we could put out ahead of time. Like, here's some things to think on, right? So you don't feel like you're being grilled in the moment. I mean, I think you want to not give them a questionnaire and that's it, right? I don't think that's gonna get good conversation, but it might be provide some sort of framework ahead of time.
Yeah, I think the only thing I'd add to that, Sean, is, and I don't, I don't want to get us in the weeds here at 9:30, but part of it is like when we try, I mean, I keep thinking about these undercurrents, right? And part of it is you don't want to overpromise people that nothing's gonna be problematic with what we find, right? Because if there's a significant undercurrent problem, there could be significant consequences to that problem, right? And so, I think that's the thing we just want to protect ourselves for. And I think that's, the group we hire will help us with that conversation, right? Because while we want to make sure people try to be open, honest and transparent, we also have to couple it with, you know, we are serious about the fact that we, you know, there's probably, we're wondering if there's some issues here we need to try to work on and try to address. So you gotta, I think, hit that sweetsbough of, you know, being realistic about the conversation too.
Yeah, something will change.
Probably, I was just gonna say, probably just the communication regards to just the transition from the four of us that were there to the fact that the line of thinking now is, you know, someone outside of the district is president. I mean, that alone, that alone is, I think, important communication and critical piece that they know there's gonna be that difference.
In that it was collective, collaborative.
Ruthie insisted, yeah.
No, I mean, Ruthie insisted that we say collaborative.
Ruthie instructed us to say.
No, but I mean, I think that has to be communicated because it's, it's not understood.
And we, I do think we commit to another follow-up. And it could be before that, to your point. And we'll do our best to get someone retained before then, but.
I just feel if we can bookend it with March 1st, because if we leave it vague, I think that's, people will say, do they need March?
I'm all in favor of it.
Well, just to give, what every teacher's probably thinking about is, can we save before spring break?
Well, yeah.
Right, is that, like, you don't want to go through spring break like, oh, man, they're gonna come and spend your spring break thing, not knowing, it's better to know.
They're gonna get to conference time too, I mean, they're gonna have a lot on their plates.
You have a staffing timeline that exists already. I mean, it's gonna, you're gonna intertwine with some things that are already set.
But as soon, and maybe as soon as we can, we're gonna do this as urgent, as quickly as we can get somebody in place.
But we're not committing to do the, doing it before spring break.
No, no, just that.
Not the, not the, not the process before spring break. So not to hijack the conversation, but to sort of what Lisa brought up doesn't get lost. Since we are talking about culture and climate, I think as a team, we will need to address some of those concerns raised by our teachers of color and administrators of color. Even, I mean, figure out how this process can help us lead to that because that's probably some of the things that we may find at Lucas may not just be unique to just Lucas. It could be throughout our district that creates the issues of what they heard at Black Voices, what I hear from some of our staff of color. I mean, it's, it's something that I know that we all care about and because I've heard it from everybody around this table. How can we address that to improve?
The good news is I think they're more comfortable sharing it with us now too, right? I think they're starting to get some of those avenues where we're hearing those same things, right? That they're sharing with people they felt trusted before, before. So I agree with you, I think those are things that what have we learned that needs to probably be applied across the system that's not just isolated to one instance, right? And so.
And don't forget, you know, not, but, you know, when we were looking at this and we're looking at retention, we did have that professor from Drexel come in and do a research study on teachers of color in Waterloo and, or no, Waterloo, Cedar Rapids, Iowa City. And all of the data she came up with in these focus groups is exactly the same thing, right? So, so we actually now have data from Midwest Iowa cities of why teachers of color leave and why they stay and some good outcomes of what, how, what would keep you here. So we've got some actual, because it doesn't exist, right? There's research on the coasts, nothing really in the Midwest, certainly our size. So we specifically did that through the equity department. And so, we've got some good info, we're not going in this blind, right? And that's, I think, gonna be helpful moving forward to say, we actually know some of the things that are teachers of color, whether it's other mothering or all these things. I don't want to go in like, we don't know anything about this because we do. And that was something that we should use that data, whether it's culture and climate or this research study.
We'll also send a new notification out to directors when you all see it. Have a chance to comment, so no one's cut off the cards on the process. Oh, we're all traveling together on this.
Yep.
Who's putting that together?
We can talk about it at nine tomorrow. Alright. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So?
Alright.